Randy, how you doing?
Is he already springing?
I think he is. You just never know.
Never know, isn't it? Randy, how are you?
All right, how you doing here?
Good.
Morning, Randy.
How's it going?
Good, how are you?
Karen from Bluegrass Ave called, she's running about five minutes late. Doing a track, so.
I guess I could sing to you, don't you get to it?
Eric.
They don't want me to sing this much, yeah.
Oh, they probably want me to. I'm kidding. They definitely don't.
Not Clark is not a good time for these guys.
Hello, guys.
Morning, Michelle.
Eric, how are you?
Not too bad.
Good. How's Becky?
Doing good. Can't complain. Takes right after me. She's doing good now, it's just scaring me for the future.
Does anyone want to speak during public hearing? We need to sign more cases. Be contained if you want to speak during public hearing. Okay, just want to make sure you hear.
Uh-oh. Mitchell. Got the A-game in here today, huh?
That's great, isn't it?
Won't get any answers today, will we?
Well, there are best, okay?
Unless it's a question about the upcoming race, you might answer that.
I'm not happy about the positive drug test, I will tell you that. He's talking about the Kentucky drug, he's talking about the pre-Christmas.
Yeah, I'm talking about the pre-Christmas.
Talking about the Kentucky.
Oh, the derby's old news.
We, uh, he's had, he's had five different inquiries in a very short period of time, plus.
So you're saying if you go away his track record, he's guilty?
No. I don't think he's guilty, but it does disturb me that these things are happening. He had maximum security last year for the Saudi Cup and Saudis raised issues about drugs and.
What he's saying, they were saying, he was saying now that it's some ointment that they rubbed on it.
Every single one of the five.
It's fine, it'll last about thirty minutes.
There's not going over.
They're eleven and twelve year old.
Look how they can drag on though.
Yeah. Fortunately, that one did not, huh?
It kind of reminds me of the, you know.
I used to have to do piano recitals and I, well, I hated them, I hated them.
Kind of reminds me of Lance Armstrong.
Years, years and years ago though.
Get up your poster, because I need to take a shot. Looks like you're better.
What's different about this order here?
Thank you.
We got all our A-gamers in here today. Lower case.
Doing all right?
Yep.
Doing okay.
And what?
Haven't seen even one of them.
Yeah, it's quite the year. Yeah. Although I didn't even recognize it back there.
Okay, are you?
The back there with all those friends.
It's all right. Please.
Karen from the Development District is running a few minutes behind. She said she'd be here about nine oh five, she thought. Briefly.
Just, just kind of an FYI, for the public hearing, we're really not required to do a prayer, a pledge, and a roll call. I mean, all, all that has to be done is call the hearing to order. I'm not really sure why that's on the agenda, but it's totally unnecessary.
I never have a problem with a little bit of prayer to Robert.
But I'm talking about the whole preamble to a public hearing.
Greg should be here momentarily, I tried to get him up, but it didn't work.
Um, Joe's not going to be here today, he's working the soil.
Ralph, I was thinking I'd have you speak after Karen gets through, assuming it gets done pretty quick. Okay.
That one, it's been, the one you had, it's been a little bit like so. The ads are everywhere. They've been everywhere, I could find.
Right, sure.
Sorry I'm late.
Hold on, my charger. Right on time. Thompson said he tried to pull you a couple times and you just wouldn't come.
What's that?
Said Thompson said he tried to pull you a couple times, but you just wouldn't come.
Well, let me comment, I couldn't just leave laying on the table without clarifying.
That's true.
I guess Willie would like to be here today.
He is not going to be here today.
Hello, Mitchell.
Hello, Greg, how are you?
Good, how are you doing?
How you doing, Greg?
Good, Chris, how about you?
Michelle, you should have just sent your A-team over and we'd have had the, I don't know, the three A-team here.
Paul? How are you?
All right.
Good, thanks.
Damn it.
Good, are you? Judge? Yep. How was your office meeting? Did you get us something to talk about today? Not yet. We're getting, we're getting there. Some disturbing trends, but just state inmates continue to seem to decrease. Yeah. A little scary, but trying to figure a way to balance that. Where the jailer is. Oh, Alicia. Paul, what's been going on, man? I haven't seen you since the Sundays. No, you're not. When? No kidding, already announced and everything. Well, congratulations.
Well, congratulations.
Morning.
I hope you enjoy whatever it is. You gonna do it in Clark County? I figured you already had something. Good for you.
Congratulations. We have what this morning that we need to do a jail transfer in our end of pay payroll. So there's an addition to your, I'm your transfer order.
Thanks for that, Alicia. Everything else is the same.
It is the same transfer order, except for the addition of the cash transfer for the jail. And I apologize, I was not here yesterday.
Very top of the, uh, so you changed the cash transfer to the jail?
I, I included the cash transfer.
Okay.
Yeah, there wasn't one in it.
There wasn't one for the jail.
I saw.
It is to cover pay. And payroll runs today, so.
Gotcha.
And I do apologize, I was not here yesterday in order to find this.
Yeah, I knew that was coming. I didn't know it was coming this month.
What transfer I had, that was, that was a complicated one, wasn't it? I got it, I got it, I got it this morning as I was walking in, at eight o'clock.
Sorry. I'm probably just forgetting about you. My brain is just working too fast this morning.
Is it this one?
Yeah.
Hmm? That looking, I don't know. What's that put is that for the year?
It means the 1.2.
One, 1.2?
Mm-hmm.
It said 1.1.
That should make it exactly the 1.2 if we need this one transferred today.
I left all my papers over there.
Well, that's good, we've only got a little over 45 days left.
But you have, are you more payrolls left?
I don't know that we're done yet.
I would have, I would have to agree with him.
Afraid you would.
It's a darn change, we're missing our one necessary party.
Uh, that Karen that's part of the public hearing with the Bluegrass Ave. We could have kept talking, Greg. We could have kept talking.
Would, yeah.
Pulled you away too early.
I could be still talking, is that right? I think they were ready for me to leave. Hey, Frank Floyd.
Okay. We're having a public hearing regarding the COVID-19 Utility Assistance Program. I'll start with a prayer. We'll do the Lord's Prayer, since this is somewhat of a special meeting. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those that trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil, for thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory, forever and ever. Amen. Now the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a free and public, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
I'm Mr. Elkins.
Present.
Davis.
Present.
Blant.
Here.
Thompson, helpless.
Present.
Thompson.
Here.
And Graham is out.
It appears we have a quorum. We call the meeting to order comments from Karen Leverens with the Bluegrass Area Development District. Sure.
Apologies for my lateness. Bit more than I was anticipating this morning. This public hearing is necessary in order to comply with the citizen participation requirements for the HUD Community Development Block Grant COVID Utility Relief Program. This meeting was advertised in the April 27th edition of the Winchester Sun. And the main purpose is to obtain views and comments into questions about the program. And technical assistance in preparing applications for the, uh, for the program is being provided by Bluegrass Ave, myself. Where technical assistance is also available to help groups representing low and moderate income persons in developing additional proposals. Information for citizens has been on file with the fiscal court since the date of the advertisement on April 27th, and will be on file through at least May 26th. Written comments may be provided to the judge's office through at least May 26th. And only cities and counties are eligible applicants for CDVG funds. All applicants must meet at least one of three national objectives, and those objectives are benefit to persons at least 51% of whom are low or moderate income, elimination of sums of light, or meeting community needs of a particular urgency. So this particular program is aimed at serving the persons who are at least 51% LMI. The tentative source of funds budgeted for the project is the $200,000. And, excuse me, if you have enough applicants come in to apply for these funds, and you exhaust that full $200,000, we can submit an additional application for another $200,000 if you think that is present.
So if we spend the first $200,000, we can submit $200,000 more?
Mm-hmm, yep.
I wouldn't wear that, okay. And will it be administered, who's administering the program?
We will, the Ave will administer all of the funds. And then you will, the fiscal court will be contracting with the local community action agency. That's who will be processing all of the households that are coming in to apply for this forgiveness. And then we'll be processing the draws on behalf of the fiscal court. And then once that fund, once a draw has been deposited into an account set up by the fiscal court, you'll write a check to the CAF agency, and they will pay the utilities directly. So none of this money is going to be going directly to an applicant. Their utility bills, water, sewer, gas, electric, um, will be paid, the utilities will be paid directly by the CAF agency on behalf of these households.
My understanding is the city has also qualified for these funds. Is there any way, or is it even legal, to keep county outside the city limit residents segregated for use of these funds versus the city? Or are they going to be co-mingled, or do you know?
Since the city is also applying, the CAF agency, you know, it'll be up to the CAF agency to kind of determine whether or not they need to pay a utility bill out of the city's allocation or out of the county's allocation. But since really city residents are also county residents, if the city expends all of their funds first, and city residents come in, but the county still has some available funding, they would be eligible to be paid out of the county.
My only concern is generally these agencies are located, you know, for Winchester, at least, in the urban area in the middle of the city, and it's really tough for people out in, you know, trap and so forth to have the same sort of access.
So that might be something that we need to meet with the CAF agency that's in Clark County and see if there's any way they could set up maybe like a, just one, one afternoon a week, or a couple afternoons a week, some way, but out in the county to make it more accessible to county.
Yeah, I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that. I don't want to leave those people out.
Yeah, and another thing that we've done, we've provided a form letter for the utilities to send out, so that, you know, obviously they're keeping a list of any customers that are past due. They can include this form letter to let them know that this program is available when they send out bills. So if they have customers who are struggling to pay bills on time, they can include the letter with their monthly bill to say, hey, if you need help, you know, call this number, and that if there's assistance available for you.
Okay. Any other questions for Karen? Do we need to take a vote on this at all? No?
No, just asking.
Okay.
Available opportunity for comment.
Are there any public comments? Okay, thank you.
Any motion to adjourn?
Yep.
Motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We have with us Senator Alvarado during our break between meetings here. Senator, is about 12 minutes long enough for you?
Sure.
Okay, go for it. Come on up. Sure, you want to, it's okay if we stream your app?
Absolutely.
Sure.
Well, thank you all. First of all, thanks for inviting me and allowing me to speak a little bit, provide kind of a bit of a legislative update on what's happened, what's kind of a wild, but a very productive legislative session. And I tried to, I was trying to do this earlier last month, and I think I didn't know you guys had a meeting in the morning. I came out in the evening, you guys, well, now we've already met. I was like, oh, man, so I'm going to see if I can come back out today. So appreciate the opportunity to provide a bit of an update on, on kind of how the session went. I think everybody knows a lot of the challenges we were facing as a Commonwealth, really, with COVID-19 last year. We had a one-year budget. We've had the unemployment insurance debacle, which continues to rage in the state. We've had difficulties in the legislature with the governor who doesn't communicate with us. Been really, really difficult in terms of that, and a lot of people clamoring for some control over executive orders. In fact, in one of his vetoes, I think the governor threatened the legislature with contempt, and threatened us with jail time. So it doesn't add to the, to good tidings between the executive branch and the legislative branch right now. We also had a, we had one-hour committee meetings, which made it very difficult for us to hear a lot of bills. And then we also had a lot of the pressures of the Breonna Taylor situation in Louisville. CARES funding, trying to designate those things. The unemployment insurance mess, 850-plus bills that consider all that during session. So we weren't expecting a lot to get accomplished, needless to say, because of the nature of the session and the restrictions. But surprisingly, it was a very, very productive session. We got a lot of things done. And some things we've been trying to get done for years. So really quickly, I'll try to go through a lightning round kind of thing. If you all have any questions, please fire away. But ultimately, the governor issued about 31 vetoes to individual bills, and dozens of line item vetoes in the budget bill. Those are, I think, all, but a couple were overridden. The one, there was a couple that were late that we didn't have the ability to override because of the timing when the bill was passed. In the Senate, we had priority bills, Senate Bill 1 and 2, which were, the first one, Senate Bill 1 was to limit the governor's emergency power to 30 days unless an extension was authorized by the General Assembly. That was vetoed, overridden. It went to the courts where it was enjoined. It's now going to the Supreme Court for a hearing in June. I would encourage everybody really to watch that. Really, it's ultimately a decision, is the governor going to have king-like powers in the state of Kentucky or not? And decide that if those powers were granted by the General Assembly, that those can be taken away as well, or limited, or changed in some way. Senate Bill 2 was reforming a lot of the administrative regulation process. We know that when we leave Frankfurt, we typically toss the governor the keys and say, don't wreck it until we get back in January. So administrative regulations are the way that a governor can issue effectively law-like powers until the General Assembly comes back in. There was a lot of emergency regs that in, in the past could not be amended, couldn't be altered, couldn't be changed. It didn't allow for public input. We've changed all that to allow, if an emergency reg is issued, that it can allow for public input and can be amended along the way. The governor vetoed that, it was also overridden, it's also before the courts. Interestingly enough, the governor used this very bill after he vetoed it and was upset about it. His cabinet came in and asked us to use what we passed in the bill to amend some of his emergency regs that he had issued, which were erroneous. And so we got them on the record saying, yeah, we like the bill, it's great, yet he's vetoing it and trying to get it knocked down. Senate Bill 4 was a no-knock warrant reform bill. We only, we had to get something done in that regard. We didn't completely abolish no-knock warrants. We think there's sorts of purpose for kidnapping, for terrorism, those kinds of things. But it does create procedures and requirements for the issuance of those warrants without notice. That was passed after it was delivered to the governor. Senate Bill 5 also created a lot of liability protections for owners of premises during a state of emergency. It affects a lot of people that have helped during COVID-19, that don't want to get sued over issues, as they were acting in good faith. It sets the time limits that were kind of around essential services only during COVID-19 and during the time of the pandemic. Again, that was really watered down, but it passed nonetheless. We expect it likely to be challenged in the courts because there's a lot of push against tort reform or any of those kinds of things, and so there's, we're expecting that. And then also Senate Bill 7, we know that a lot of people, when CARES money, we allotted CARES money to the Unemployment Trust Fund. We know that a lot of that, those monies were overpaid for people, and then the governor was saying, we want to bring those monies back. So it requires the administration to set up regulations around overpayment, that people don't have to return that money if they've been overpaid. House Bill 1, we had, the first one was also a reopening of Kentucky, provided a lot of the guidelines to open up businesses, to open up schools, suspend interest on unpaid unemployment insurance contributions. Long-term care facilities, people could visit their loved ones. Again, that was vetoed, overridden, also within the courts for June. House Bill 4 is a constitutional amendment that would allow the General Assembly to call itself into special session for an extra 10 days upon three-fifths vote of the House, something we all will get to vote on next November. Again, during this past year, a lot of people were clamoring to do something about some of the orders that were issued by the governor, but we couldn't do anything until we got called back in. This would allow the General Assembly to hold days in reserve and then call ourselves back in later on in the year, for the full calendar year. And again, the voters of Kentucky will get to decide that. We also got a couple of good bills. I think for local government, House Bill 7 was an advisory council for recovery-righty communities. The Office of Drug Policy can help develop, can help develop skilled workforce, improve the procedures of measuring success of recovery programs predominantly for counties and for jails that are doing a good job in that regard. We also had some KERS pension reforms for county and state government, kind of producing the separation of county and city. I know it's important for this group and for city employees as well. They've got a bit more funds than a lot of the state employees. It allows for the management of funds to be separate, but allowing them to pool the funds to invest them together. So that did pass in House Bill 9, and in House Bill 8 also. For quasi-governmental agencies, a lot of our health departments that are struggling to make their contributions for the pensions, they want to stay in, they can't afford to stay in, so there's a subsidy that's being paid by the state government now. This created a second subsidy that's going to start high, and then kind of wean its weight back down as well for those who want to stay in the system. So those are kind of the, some of the priority bills. In the budget, we passed a continuation budget this past year. A lot of CARES money that came in, about $1.6 billion total, coming to cities and counties. We know that Clark County's getting $7 million, I think Winchester's getting 5.1. Our schools are also receiving. Our schools are also receiving an additional $2.1 billion in additional funds. The state's giving them 4.4 billion in the state budget, 2.1 billion coming in addition to that. So sometimes you're going to hear people saying, we're not getting adequately funded. They're more than adequately funded this year in terms of funding that's coming in for the K through 12 public school system. Also, a lot of ARPA funding, we know that that number has been reduced down to 2.1, it was 2.4. They have determined that we don't need as much. So 1.3 billion of that has already been allocated, and I'll go through that really quickly, where we're kind of allocating those funds. $250 million is going towards broadband development. There's parameters for how that funding must be used for underserved areas. That was passed in House Bill 320. House Bill 405, we had $20 million towards DCBS foster prevention services. We rank worst in child abuse in the country for three years running now in Kentucky. That's a statistic as a pediatrician that embarrasses me, I don't want to see that happen. We've got to make some changes. We're going to have a bit of an informal task force this year to put together a legislative package to see what we can do to help improve that ranking as a state. But we have put $20 million towards those prevention services. Also, $37 million towards tracking COVID infections in our jails, $2 million towards COVID fraud for the Attorney General's Office, $12 million towards childcare reimbursement rate increase. And then in House Bill 382, another $50 million for the governor to be able to use for broadband if companies want to come into Kentucky, that he can use that to entice them and provide them some abilities for that. We also added $140 million for full-day kindergarten, something that our K through 12 education system has been begging for, for a long time. And then also, you know, the governor borrowed in excess of $800 million from the federal government to help kind of prop up the unemployment insurance fund. We put $575 million in House Bill 382 to help pay some of that off. Expect more of that coming to completely pay off that system. That's going to keep a lot of our employers from having to go to the highest pay scale on unemployment insurance rates, the lowest one, and keep it where it's affordable. You know, a lot of our rural hospitals are shutting down through COVID. I think 14 are at risk of shutting their doors completely. We put $20 million into a loan fund to help those hospitals borrow money to keep themselves afloat. And we also had $30 million towards a county jail performance pilot program. I know our jailers here, and it might be of interest to look at that, be able to apply for that, is to try to do things to help improve based on numbers and outcomes. And then you can apply for that for pilot programs, so that might be something worth considering. We also added a $2 increase towards our per DM rate on our county jails. We all know the difficulties every county is having, including our own, to help afford to keep our jails open, that's an additional $12 million. And then also we added towards urgent need schools, a lot of our schools have very old buildings, $127 million towards new construction for a lot of those with the increased inflationary cost of construction. I'm hoping, it may not go as far, but we put some money towards that. And then also for water and sewer projects, $150 million is going to be distributed based on populations in counties, plus an additional $50 million in drinking water grants and another $50 million that goes to counties that doesn't cover enough for them as well. So $250 million total for that. Other bills that I thought would be important, at least that you all might have of interest, election integrity was one that we know was passed, House Bill 574. Kind of a big sweeping bill that's going to make it, as our Secretary of State says, easier to vote, harder to cheat. It allows for three days of early voting, so on Election Day, which would be a Tuesday, the Thursday, Friday, and Saturday prior, people will be able to vote live in person. All votes have to be counted by Election Day. We also have, counties can now have an option to determine how many locations they want to have, if they want to have fewer or more. That's up to our local clerks, and that's something, again, they can make a decision as to how they want to distribute that. Some like the smaller and less locations, some want more, again, that'll be something to consider. The absentee voter portal will be opened up online 45 days prior to election. People can apply for an absentee ballot 15 days prior it closes. You can track that ballot. If there's a problem with the ballot, if it doesn't have a signature, if the seal wasn't properly sealed, people can go in and correct that ballot so that it can count. So we make sure that people that have cast it can see there's a problem with it and they can correct it. We know that people had signed up to vote when they were 18, and when they're 80, their signatures might not quite match anymore. So we know that they can go back and kind of make those corrections. And also, everybody's got to be kind of transitioning into paper ballots, not going to be using the electronic ones. And it's going to help, again, move a lot of our ineligible voters off to clean up our voter rolls. So really good bill that's coming through. Senate Bill 105 was one on blighted property. We know that there's always been an issue for local government for a long time, and I think it's been out there probably for 10 years, trying to find a way to help establish guidelines to, if somebody has an abandoned property, it's unsightly and it's diminishing the property value in a community, to allow now for a conservative to take possession of that and undertake the rehab of an abandoned or blighted property. And also creates a procedure for a hearing of a petition for that. And that's something, again, that's going to take effect on January 1st of 2022. So when we have issues with that, now local governments can start to take action. Also, we had on driver's licenses, we know we're moving all those towards regional offices for the Department of Transportation to start issuing real ID. We're going to start requiring vision testing for people when they apply for driver's license. You've got to be able to have a test done with 12 months prior to the issuance of that license. It can be done by your optometrist, a nurse practitioner, a physician. It can be done at the location as well, but it's going to have a fee if you do it that way. That's going to start taking effect on July 1st, 2024. We're one of only a few states that doesn't require at least an eye test before getting your driver's license. We also had Senate Bill 146 establishing 12 regional full-time free public employment offices when there's an average unemployment rate above 5% for the preceding six months. The Labor Cabinet can open additional satellite offices, the governor's already taken advantage of that bill. And also, House Bill 272 allowed a water district or water association to charge a late payment charge of 10% of the amount billed. It prohibited PSC from modifying, rejecting, or suspending late payment charges established by tariff. And I think also House Bill 513 required any local government placing any fee tax or license on the property tax bill, shall negotiate a collection of up to 4.25% for any sheriff collecting this fee tax or license as well. A lot of business bills that got done, tax relief for disaster response employees and businesses, people that had federal loans that were granted for PPP loans from the federal government. We provided the complete tax deduction for those, for those monies that were helped to keep our businesses open and paid for employees. House Bill 497 also a certificate of employability. Incarcerated individuals can achieve education credits now, and it also helps people that have gone through substance use disorder, transition out of prison, get jobs, healthcare, state IDs, and access to social services like SNAP. So we're trying to get people that are, you know, struggling with that, are incarcerated, to help them move, move along, get them back into the workforce. We have about 100,000 jobs right now in the state of Kentucky that are open that people are not filling. And so we're trying to find ways to get people into that. A lot of mental health and healthcare bills we got done, an insulin co-pay bill that reduces insulin co-pays of $30. Telemedicine has been broadened, we needed to use that to deliver healthcare this past year. Also, things to reduce, something called co-pay accumulators, which helps with drug costs for patients. People are going through substance use treatment, prior auths for medication treatment, it's going to be waived now within insurance companies. And also for dementia, it's the sixth leading cause of death in the state. Trying to find a way for direct staff to have training for that and also a coordinator for the state to help us with the state health plan. We actually, everybody's hearing about Dogecoin and cryptocurrency. We actually passed a bill that provides an exemption from sales and use taxes for electricity used in cryptocurrency mining operations, trying to attract some of those companies here to Kentucky. And it also uses a lot of high-powered computers, and it helps them solve kind of complex math problems to unlock new currencies. And for the states, we're hoping to tap into some of that. Senate Bill 84 also was inmate care, it banned jails and prisons from placing pregnant inmates in solitary confinement. And it also grades, grants inmates 72 hours, the newborn after birth, and six weeks of postpartum care. Some on police standards, the FOP was kind of pushing for, for strengthening the police decertification process by expanding the number of acts considered professional wrongdoing within law enforcement. We also passed a good bill, House Bill 372, which provided a lot of tax incentives for remote workers to move to Kentucky. These people that are out of the state, they come to Kentucky, move here, purchase homes in Kentucky. It also had data center tax credits. The governor vetoed that bill. That was one of the ones that we didn't have a chance to override because we thought it was a no-brainer. The explanation was that he thought the bill moved too quickly. He didn't disagree with the policy, he just thought we passed it too fast, which is what people want government to do, and we found surprising. Also, on sexual abuse, Senate Bill 52 kind of amended third-degree rape, third-degree sodomy, and second-degree sexual abuse statutes so that law enforcement officers can be charged with those crimes if they engage in sexual acts. And then House Bill 472 extended the statute of limitations for misdemeanor sexual assault offenses against minors from five years to 10 years, and extended the window on civil claims for people in that misconduct as well. That's a lot of stuff. I could go on for another hour. At that speed with the amount of bills we got done, we have a lot of things to do in the future. We have another two-year budget coming up that we're going to be facing. We have over about another billion dollars to allocate for ARPA funding as well moving forward. Road infrastructure, I know is still important. A lot of folks are needing, we need more monies for road infrastructure. Hoping to see that the feds are talking about putting trillions of dollars into the economies of states to help do that. We have a big bridge in northern Kentucky that we have to get repaired. And so we're hopeful that we can do something. There's been some discussion about another bite at tax reform in this state to consider lowering income tax, corporate taxes, consider raising of sales tax, gas tax, to kind of offset that and be tax-neutral, but to start transitioning our economy from instead of a production-based tax towards a consumption-based taxation system. And then we're going to be looking at redistricting as well. We're waiting for the census report sometime in September or October. If we don't act, someone will probably sue saying they've been underrepresented. We do have areas, we know that there's been a lot of population loss in the western, eastern part of the state. People are moving into the triangle, and so we're probably going to see differences in House and Senate representation there. And then also our congressional districts will probably change based on that, but we can't do anything until we get those numbers in, and they're going to be delayed because of COVID. Not sure if the governor will call us into a special session, we're hoping he will. Also, to help redistribute some of the new ARPA funds that'll come in, he might call us in for that and allow us to not only address the, excuse me, the ARPA funds, but also the redistricting for, for the state, is what we're hoping to see happen. So a lot of things that got done, more than we thought. There's also one other bill, I know for a lot of landlords, Senate Bill 11 was something to damage to rental property. We know a lot of folks can willfully do that, and there's no consequences from it. We've established now criminal mischief in the first degree, if someone creates more than $1,000 of damage to someone's property, that's a Class D felony. And if it's $500, between $500 and $1,000, it's in the second degree, which is a Class A misdemeanor. So hopefully protect people's real estate when they're renting it to others. Judge, that's a lot of stuff. Kind of go through a quick clip. Fortunately, I can talk pretty fast, that's the Spanish in me. I don't know if anybody has any questions about anything in particular, I'd be happy to answer whatever I can.
Well, we are moving into our regular meeting time, but if any of the magistrates have a question, you can ask.
Thank you for that.
Thank you all, appreciate very much.
Thanks Senator, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will now call to order the regular session of the Clark County Fiscal Court. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Ms. Elkins?
Present.
Present.
Judge, ever some people came in late, they might want to sign the speak sheet. I mean, while the senator was talking, so they might be afforded the opportunity to sign in to speak before we go into session.
If anyone is here for a public comment?
Thank you, Judge.
You're welcome.
I'm present.
Thompson Tovis?
Present.
Thompson?
Here.
And your name is out.
Okay, it appears we have a quorum. The next thing on your agenda is adoption of the agenda. I'll note that we do have a consent agenda on this document, so if there's anything you want removed from the consent agenda, please speak now.
A motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, a note in your minutes, indigent burials, David Berry, date of death 2/26/2021, and Linda Long, date of death 4/11/2021. Okay, I'd like to take a moment to recognize some individuals who were involved in a rescue that we had. I believe it was an overturned car in the river, and a couple of them are Clark County Road Department employees and a friend of theirs. My understanding is, you may have had a chance to read the article about it in the newspaper, but when I say your name, please stand up, and if you don't mind, walk here to the corner, okay? David Begley. Caleb Chancellor. Jason Burton.
I believe I have to hear it right. Want to thank you for what you did. This is a Clark County Colonel, something that I've decided to create to recognize people in the community or people who work for us who commit outstanding deeds or give outstanding service. One of these, to each of these individuals for their heroism and helping one of their fellow citizens.
Thanks again. Now get back to work.
And they did.
Let's see, now we have public comments. Can somebody circulate? Oh, there it is. See what these are relating to. Is anybody on the public comment sheet not here to talk about the budget? If so, I'll let you go first. Okay. Steve Asbury?
I'm not here to talk about the budget, not yet. Steve Asbury, 15, Meadow Road Drive, Winchester, Kentucky. Wanted to speak during public comment. This is a resolution that I need to be, have the court fill out and sign for me. This is to become an applicant agent for the county for the ice storm for FEMA. Just received this by email. It's kind of time-sensitive, didn't have a ti, didn't have time to get it on a regular agenda, so come to public comment asking that you all would sign and pass this resolution so I can be the applicant agent for FEMA, or for our county in order to receive, to communicate with FEMA.
And is this to, is this for the public assistance funds or?
This is for the ice storm, this is the PA, that is correct. The flood is, we're still waiting, so it's, it's a process. But this is for the ice storm, so.
If you look at that document, it asks for authorization of the body, not me. So that's why I suggested he bring it to the meeting. Do I have a motion to approve Steve Asbury as our applicant agent?
Someone?
Second.
Any discussion?
Could we get a copy in our box?
Sure can. Well, I'll let you, more welcome to look at it right now than I can copy it prior to the judge filling it out.
Standard government form looks like, doesn't it?
Yes, sir.
Anybody else want to see a copy?
It's nothing more to allow me to communicate with FEMA, they, they just know that I do have the permission to act on behalf of the county to receive the funding.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Nancy Turner of Bobby Road.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning Nancy. You can take that off if you want to. Oh, yeah.
All right, well, good morning. I'm here today on behalf of the budget. Todd is unable to be with you today, so I'm pitch hitting for him in the budget for the economic development offices. I know that each of you got the budget request and the shared agreement. The shared agreement for our offices began in nineteen ninety-three. It was one of the first community, we were one of the first communities that actually brought in all three entities together, those entities being Industrial Authority, Tourism, and Chamber of Commerce. And I do think that was visionary, because all three of those entities do work in tandem to not only improve the quality of life, but to increase economic development. Per that agreement, the city and the county were charged with paying for the salary of the Industrial Authority, one-third of the shared employee, which is Erica, and also the benefits of all three staff members. The city also is part of that agreement, and I stand before you today to urge you to please fund us entirely at a budget amount of a hundred and seven thousand dollars. Why it is so important this year is because of COVID. As you are aware, tourism was the first and hardest entity that was impacted by COVID, and we continue to struggle today. Hopefully, you are aware that our funding is solely based on transient room tax, being hotel tax. We've seen a decrease in about thirty-eight percent over the past year. The chamber also has seen a decrease in decline in membership. So, every dollar that is not funded towards this agreement will mean that we need to take operating dollars out of our budget to fund this. And at a time when businesses continue to struggle and get back on their feet, I feel that it is imperative that we use our operating money to promote Winchester, to promote those businesses, and Cindy to be able to utilize her funds, and Todd as well. So, I know you're champions of economic development, and I hope that you will fund the full amount. Thank you for your time.
I have a question before you go Nancy.
Yes.
I know that at least this year, there was some, I think forgivable loans that were applied for. Do you have any idea if there's future funding like that that could be applied for, for either economic development, the Industrial Authority? The reason I'm asking is because we've just received a hundred and seventy-some odd pages of Treasury documents explaining what can be done with the Recovery Act funds that are supposed to come in at some point, and it would seem to me that it might be possible for some of these agencies to apply for some, some of those funds. Maybe we could put them towards that, but generally, they won't let you take funds twice if you've already received them, or if you're already applying. Do you know if you'll be applying for any more?
The only money that we have applied for and received is the PPP money. Tourism is looking at an EDA grant. The feds put three billion dollars for tourism projects, and we are looking at applying for a grant for the wayfinding signage that we discussed. I don't know of any funding that Todd or Cindy would be applying for.
Okay. And I will say, that thing that we talked about with the signs, if you want to talk with Alan Curtis back there sometime, he'll be more than happy to meet with you about that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks Nancy.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Jeff Lewis, fifteen wheeler.
Thank you Judge. Like Nancy said, I'm here to briefly discuss the budget. I know you guys have done some of your preliminary discussions, and you know, spoke to Robert about what we could potentially be getting for this year. Just wanted to urge the court, three years ago, we received around two hundred and sixty-four thousand from the county, and then it went down to two fifty-seven, and then, of course, with COVID, it went down to two thirteen. Now, there was a ten thousand dollar capital construction in there, but I'm just talking about for general budget. So, it went from two sixty-four to two thirteen. And my concern is, you know, we're trying to do everything we can to try to keep the parks up to standard, but we're seeing a trend where that's continually going down. And that concerns me. Obviously, with economic development and things like that, the park system needs an overhaul. That's going to be discussed today as well. But even if we get that capital construction money that we can borrow with the city, county, and spread out that over the next three or four years, it still doesn't help us when it comes to operations budget. The pool that the county is in half on is deteriorating in age. It's probably close to a quarter halfway through its life. Those costs are only going to go up. So, you know, what ends up happening is if our budget, our operation budget goes to two sixty-four to two thirteen, the only place we have to take is from maintenance. Because if you look at our budget, we did, it, there's no fluff. It's one person at the front desk, it's one person guarding. That is what we have to have to run the facility. And anything less than that, then it takes our full-time staff, which is me. We only have two full-time staff that's up front. Because of COVID, we couldn't fill one of the positions. So, we are covering front desk. And that's fine, we can do that, but when you're talking about retention and things like that, we're stretching our people thinner than we ever could be. And, you know, with hopefully getting through COVID, we was hoping to see to try to come back up a little bit and not stay the same. So, that's just something, you know, we're making that plea. We had requested twenty thousand from the city and county for the end of this fiscal year, because to be honest with you, June, if we don't get some help, the mowers won't be mowing. I mean, we just will, we do not physically have the gas. With, just like Nancy said, we took some of the hardest hits with COVID restrictions. We, our people don't want to come back because of the mask, they don't want to come back because of COVID. We had to close down because of governor's orders for two full months, so we lost all that revenue. But when we're losing revenue, we still have bills. The, the pool still has to be kept at a certain temperature. So, regardless of what we get operations, the pool still, or the, the main bills we get are still electric bills and things like that. It doesn't matter if we're there or not. You're looking at three thousand dollars a month. You know, so if, if taken in account the two thirteen, you know, we're getting around sixteen thousand a month from the county, you know, three thousand, that goes to electric right off the top, and that's not counting, you know, all the other bills we have. So, I'm not, that's, there's no fluff in there for, for staff or things like that. That's just what it takes to run the facility. So, I just was going to urge the court, I know budgets are tight, but, you know, we were going to urge the court to, anything we can get toward the end of this fiscal year, and to begin next fiscal year, or we're going to be, we're always going to be at the very bottom. And if we, Parks Matrix came out just the other day, and Clark County, we're on the extremely low end of everything when it comes to budget, when it comes to staff pay, when it comes to per capita parks and properties. You know, we're on the bottom, you know. So, if we're going to look at trying to move forward with economic development, things like that, the park system is one of the first things people talk about when they come here. And to be honest with you, and we have met, and trying to make some improvements are going to be huge, but if we keep going this way, that we can't maintain what we have. We will get some new renovations, but the rest of the parks are going to be, you know, circa nineteen seventy. So, that's, that was my plea is to, anything we can do to try to not continue going down, and maybe start trying to go back to, you know, at least when we were at, you know, four years ago. Because, yes, we tried to raise more revenue, but, you know, as we're raising revenue and we get less money from you guys, I understand that's less off the taxpayers, but we're not going anywhere. You know, we're working hard to raise revenue with what we get, but if the money comes back off the back end, we're still staying at zero. So, that was my plea, and if you guys have any questions, I'll answer.
The judge has proposed two forty. What did you request?
It was four hundred and sixty, that was from the city and county. The county, we requested more, or excuse me, the city requested more because they've covered our health insurance. We requested forty more thousand from the city, but that's because they've always covered, not always last year, they covered the, because we're on their health insurance plan. And again, that's, if you look at our budget, we, our budget committee looked at, those are having just enough people to run the facility and pay the bills. So, if, if that's not there, then we, the only place we have to cut again is maintenance and, and things like that.
Plus the twenty to follow up from the end of this year.
That was to get us through the end of this fiscal year. And the, the city had, has given us twenty, and, you know, obviously, we're still waiting on a decision from the court, but we were hoping to get some, some form of COVID relief for the end of this fiscal year, because those two months we were closed. Plus, like I said, as we're closing, not generating revenue, we're still paying the electric bill. You know, even though we cut everything way back, it's still costing.
But the parks didn't qualify for any COVID relief, is that correct?
It had to come through the city and county. We didn't independently qualify. Everything had to be, I tried to see if we could apply, and it said everything had to be applied through city and county. And the city's money they gave us said it wasn't through COVID relief, it was through their general budget. But I believe they received COVID relief in other areas, and I don't know what you guys received, so.
So, can either yourself or one of the magistrates who's been working on this long-term maintenance plan, talk about that a little bit? My understanding is, there's a, an idea to take out a fairly substantial loan in order to pay for improvements to several of the parks, is that correct?
I will, I will start the discussion. I know Daniel and Robert are in, are involved in it as well as on the city side, Ramsey and, and Shannon Cox. What we were looking at doing, normally, the city and county is going to give us around, you know, as we ask, probably forty, fifty thousand dollars a year toward maintenance parks. So, what we were looking to do is try to see what we can do, and I have someone coming tomorrow to walk with me. It's hard to get people to come to give you bids, to be honest with you. But I do have a gentleman coming from Louisville to walk the parks and look at all the resurfacing, see what it costs. We have a general idea what it's going to cost for the timbers that go around the playgrounds, which are all rotted out, and we're, we're going to be getting those bids. But the, the object would be to, in essence, put some of that money we would get each year into budget anyway, and instead of trying to do small things, you'd be completely replacing, you know, either the majority of the parks, or if we get down to it, we might have to narrow it down based on what the city, county is willing to accept as a loan, and then pick the ones that are, they're the highest priority.
So, do you have any idea what that investment would be?
That, really, before they got into the depths of it, I know it was discussed at the city commission, but we just wanted to kind of get a consensus if everybody had an interest in potentially, you know, evaluating that as an option, because I feel it's more financially feasible to plan in a budget of a, of a loan payment of thirty thousand dollars a year over a five, six-year period, and get all these projects done at once, as opposed to the parks saying, well, we need to do this, and it's going to be a hundred thousand dollar deal, and we're having to come up with a hundred thousand, or seventy-five, fifty, whatever it may be. So, this was an idea. So, we don't know the exact dollar amount that it's going to be. We don't know anything, but just wanted to kind of see if y'all are open to the idea, if you think it's a, a possibility. So, then that way, they can take the time and, and get the exact dollar amount that we'd be looking at, and then from that point, we just have to meet and prioritize what's, you know, the most heavily utilized, and, you know, what we have ownership in, and that, all that good stuff, and, and see what we can do to in, in, increase those parks. Because I've gone around each of those parks, and a lot of those tennis courts, basketball courts, I mean, they're in pretty bad shape, and.
They are, and that is, again, it's, it's not this court's fault or the city's fault, it's just accumulation of years of where we have to cut. It ends up going into the maintenance and upkeep, because it's the only place we have to cut, because the reality is, it's either pay the electric bill or refurbish parts of the parks. And like Daniel said, I've been here, believe it or not, I'm getting ready to push start my tenth year. The only park we've worked on and completed, and I say completed, we've put a new playground at, is Fairfield, and it's probably the size of, from here back. And we got a, we got, and you guys helped with that. We got ten thousand dollars for that, and we was able to get a half-off price through Little Tykes, where we ended up getting a, a twenty thousand dollar playground that would have been forty over there. But since I've been here, that's the only park that we've been able to do anything to as far as replacing something. And that's ten years. So, like Daniel's saying, if we keep trying to do it at one park a year, I'll be long gone and dead before we get five of them done, when you could take that, close to that same amount of money, or whatever you guys can, can stomach, and finish really a large part of the parks at one shot. And then you'd have them done now, and then we would go from being really on the bottom end of the park system to at least the upper middle, especially with the help you guys have given us with the College Park Playground. We know there's some other things, you know, that you guys have helped on, lights in the pool, some of those things. So, it, you know, we appreciate the help we've got, but, you know, we definitely, you know, we felt like before COVID, we were heading in such a good direction, and now it's kind of like we're, we're going the other direction. And, and we understand that the budgets are just not there, but, you know, if there's any way we can try to prevent that from going the other direction, because our guys are, like everybody in the whole, that's still working, are stretched super thin, and I don't want to lose them.
I have a question, Judge. Jeff, how many, and I understand, you correct me if I'm wrong, but is it three parks that the county co-owns with the city?
The three largest parks.
College, Lykan's?
Yes, sir.
Community?
Yes, sir. That's the three large ones that, that both are co-deeded to, so to speak.
And how many parks do the city, is, where, where this, where in the city is the sole owner?
If you take those three out, you're looking at seven, seven neighborhood parks that, that the cities, you know, are, well, and I say the city, believe it or not, there's still, the parks are deeded some, even though we're not supposed to be. The College Park Building itself is deeded to the Parks Department. Lykan's is deeded to the Parks Department because of the Lykan's Foundation. So, there are a few that are gray between the three of us. Some are individual, so it's not, you know, it's not, not all of them are just to the parks.
Of those seven other parks, the city is the sole owner, how many of those actually have any, do they all have facilities on them?
They do, and I, I, I sent out a inventory list, but I can tell you from here, the majority of them have at least a, a basketball court and a playground.
And a shed.
And a swing set.
And a picnic.
Some have a shelter. The majority do have a shelter.
Wiseman, I think is one of those, right.
Yeah, so some of those do have shelters.
And they want a community park in terrible shape.
Uh, we looked at it, again, that's part of our bid process. We do have gentlemen thinks that can be salvaged, but it is going to take some work. But it's the largest shelter in the entire county, and it's, 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 the roof is just, again.
And you haven't even talked about the splash pad.
No, the splash pad is, that is, that's another issue.
That's another issue altogether.
Yeah.
And I, I would, I would submit that regardless of whose name the deed is in, all of the parks belong to all the citizens of Clark County, so it makes no difference whose name the deed is in.
Any other questions for? And again, I applaud, you know, Daniel and, and the court as, as a whole. I know you guys have all talked about it behind the scenes, about the possibility of the renovation project, and it's greatly needed, and I don't think it would be a huge difference in cost, like Daniel said, if we continued to do twenty, thirty thousand dollar projects each year, but you're only getting one playground done. If you're going to commit that amount of money, you could do Lykan's, College, Community, and maybe even some, or touch all the smaller parks, even if it's just the timbers that go around the playgrounds, because we can add mulch later. If we could do those things, it would be a huge, huge difference into what the parks look like. Because I'll be honest with you, I get calls daily, and it's, and it's embarrassing to have to go out and look at our, at our, our tennis courts and things like that. They're, they, they look really rough.
Actually, liability more than anything. Phil, could you update us on the playground, the new playground too, while you're here?
Oh, yes.
When you get, when you get through?
Oh, I'm, I'm good. If you don't have any more questions, we actually have.
I do. I just want one, one, one point, and I know Magistrate Davis has mentioned this multiple times in different meetings. If we ever are going to do some type of project like this, now's the time to do it, just because how cheap money is right now as far as borrowing. You know, rates are at historic lows and something, so that's something to really take into consideration as we go down. Sorry, Magistrate.
I was just trying to, I guess, understand Magistrate Blanton's question. You, you, the judge has proposed two hundred and forty thousand. That sounds like maybe that's the full amount you asked for from the county? Is that correct?
No, sir. It was four hundred.
From the city and county?
No, sir.
No. Our end would be four hundred, that's what he's asked.
That would be if we paid the same amount as the city.
As the city.
Understand.
And then back to the, the playground project, which you guys were involved in, obviously, we're looking at an install date of middle of August. We could do it a little earlier, but we have summer day camp going on, and we didn't want to take it down in the middle of summer day camp. So, we'll have a summer, we'll have a project, a, a community project middle of August to, to put the playground. So, it'll be in the ground and finished in August.
Jeff, one question too. Thanks for bringing that up, Magistrate Elkins. That brought me to my next point. The, during COVID, the court went down twenty-five thousand dollars than what we originally, from, from the previous, from the previous year. So, this is actually restoring it higher than what it was prior to COVID. Now, the city, how much did they cut in, during the COVID?
It was approximately forty-eight percent.
Give me a dollar figure on that.
Do you have a dollar amount?
It went from over three, to three eighty to two fifty.
So, significant amount, okay.
So, the city?
Well, let me, let me rephrase. They also cover the recreation budget, which was established when the Parks Department become the actual recreation part, not just the, the Parks Park. They established a fifty-two thousand dollar recreation budget. That was removed as well. So, it's even more. That's what.
Have they reinstated the?
We have, had our, but, we have our budget meeting with them Monday.
Monday.
Two sixty-four is what you had in eighteen, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, two sixty-four was what you had in eighteen. How much did we budget last fiscal year?
Two thirteen.
Two thirteen.
And how much additional funds did we give, give you from the community fund?
For this la- last fiscal year?
This year.
This year, if you're counting the playground, that would be fifty.
Fifty plus, what about the lighting?
It'd be ten, so sixty.
Sixty. So, that's actually more than two thousand and eighteen.
Two seventy-three.
Okay.
Well, if you want to count that, then you have to count the fiscal court fund that we're paying for the nettoium fee as well, if you want to count it that way.
Sure.
But that's not fiscal court funds, that's fiscal court fund, which comes from the community foundation.
We vote on it, we spend it. Money's money.
It's still fiscal court fund. It is fiscal court funds, but I, I'll say this, I, the playground equipment that, that we recently did or are doing, I've, I've had overwhelming support of that. That's, I've had many people reach out to me and, and talk about that, how much that was needed, and I do agree it's needed. Magistrate Konstantopoulos contacted me about some of the other work he and Magistrate Blanton are working on, and I do support that work, because it's something we need to, we need to put our, to put some money into the park system here.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I do want to see if I could get you to meet perhaps with Road Supervisor Curtis at some point regarding some of the maintenance issues.
Yes, sir.
He and I have kind of spoken, as a side note, on some things that maybe could be done to help with productivity. Perhaps, you know, I know it, it's a bear to mow Lykan's Park, and maybe if, if you could just make a couple changes in equipment, you may be able, you may be surprised how a ten thousand dollar investment in equipment may save you thirty thousand dollar in man-hours. Just.
I, I would doubt that a bit. I would tell you right now, we have one mower that's working. We have one mower. Our, our oldest mower is two, we have a two thousand twelve X mark that is our best mower right now. And then, other than that, the other two went down as early as yesterday. And if it wasn't for our, our maintenance mechanic, they would have been, they would have been gone a long time ago. Our, our next youngest mower is two thousand. Our, our next youngest mower is 2017. Uh, and he could tell you, I don't know how many hours you normally get on a zero turn, 1,500? We're, we're, 3,000's the lowest we have hours. Uh, again, that's just where we have to cut. So yeah, I agree that we could, but again, you have to have a skilled operator to pull that too. Uh, so the guys we get that come in on summer that can do that type of mowing normally don't have the skill to run a tractor, uh, safely. Uh, you know, we only have two maintenance guys that are full time. Uh, and honestly, we're getting bids right now to possibly get out of mowing altogether because the money's just, we, we can't hardly afford to do it. So we are getting bids right now, uh, at looking at possibly outsourcing the mowing. Because we, you know, honestly, the gas, uh, we get beat up on soccer because it's not, cause not the, the fields, but the common ground isn't cut to the golf course level. Uh, and it costs us, it costs us thousands of dollars a month to cut that. And we get a hundred dollars a week from the lease. So no one wants to raise lease because it's it's supposed to be mowed and things like that. So all these grounds still have to be maintained. And a lot of the things, those pull behinds, you can use it at Combs Pat and you can use a little bit at Lykanes. But a lot of our smaller parks, uh, they don't do well in those areas.
What's the ownership of that, the soccer complex? How's that?
It's city.
City, okay.
W M, was it W M? W, W M owns it. And then you all kind of got croaked into, to, to, you know, uh, cutting the grass there. But one thing, you know, like Little League, I think a lot of people need to know, like Little League, they talk about their parks and they think that everybody's putting money into this. But they actually take their, they take care of their own fields. There's nobody, you know, it's all volunteers and everything. So a lot of these leagues and programs need to.
Step up.
Step up and have volunteers and that type of thing help chip in to take care of some of these.
And we've had that discussion, park board meetings.
Yes. And not only that discussion, but I still get people calling me saying, well, how were you able to cut the dog park? People still assume Legacy Grove is ours. They drive by and see it and say, well, why is this park being kept up better than ours? If the word still hasn't got out, that's not our park. But we got word as early as this Saturday, I got people calling saying, well, why was the dog park mowed but the soccer, not the fields, the fields are perfect, but the common ground, which we mowed over four times this summer, is this high instead of, you know, golf course high. You know, people don't understand that we're, you know, we are under an extremely tight budget normally, even under the good circumstances. So yeah, we've asked soccer to try to step up. I know that, uh, they have some good people on their board and people that do volunteer work, but Little League really sets the example, uh, of what they do as far as. I went out to their opening day, pristine, beautiful, everything redone. And, uh, again, it was the same for some of the other leagues.
Any other questions for Jeff?
I, I just want to say one last thing. And I, I appreciate where you guys are coming from as far as the money we receive from the community fund. I'm, I agree, money's money. No offense. I'll, I'll take it wherever you get it. But those are tangible things that you can do. We still have to operate. So the operation seems what concerns me is when we're cutting staff, cutting staff and asking more, asking more. If you go to any other Parks Department, we tell them we have three full-time staff. Actually, we have two, three full-time staff in the office. Take maintenance, mowing out of the way and our aquatic director that runs everything we do in this department. They laugh at me. They're like, it's, it's really not possible. So we have really good staff working a lot of hard hours through COVID and just normal. So I appreciate every penny.
Is usage still significantly down or have people started to return?
I'd say we're at 40% and I'm hoping as the mask mandates slowly go down, that that, I believe it will go up, but a lot of people are, a lot of people just say, well, they're not coming in there with the mask on. And I teach with a mask. I taught last night and I tell you, it ain't easy. You can do it, but it ain't easy.
So I guess just from a long-term perspective, and I know it's going to be hard to, to nail down what the usage will be, but I don't know that it makes sense to assume 100% usage and staff for 100% if we don't think it's ever going to get back to that.
I, I think that's a perfect, uh, example of how we, when we did this past budget was we, in order to pay the bills before, we did have a lot more revenue coming in from, from patrons. But as that's went down, the costs don't go down. You know, the cost stays the same. So that's where we're asking for a little bit more from the city and county to get us through COVID. Now we're hoping that that goes back up and we're able to get back, you know, to where we're, where, where we were. But I don't want to be sitting in here and, you know, February and saying, hey, you know, we're in the same spot we are and, you know, barely squeaking by and having late payments. And I mean, we're, you know, we're literally getting cutoff notices, you know? Uh, and, you know, that's, that's pretty sad when you're trying to go to W M U with a cutoff notice and beat the cutoff time.
Yeah, but that makes sense. COVID didn't keep the grass from growing.
Yes, sir.
Didn't mean you didn't have to turn your lights on.
Exactly. And then, then the same thing with the pool. A lot of people's like, and Matt Beltrier told me, he said, you just need to shut the pool down this summer. And I said, it doesn't work that way. It sounds great. You can say no one's coming in, but you have to keep water in the pool or the pool will come out of the ground. And then you've destroyed the entire pool. There's hydrostatic pressure that comes up from the ground. If you don't keep water on it, the hydrostatic pressure will push that pool out of ground. And the, the investments you were making still to pay off that debt is gone. So you still have to treat it chemically or you'll have a swamp. So there's, there's still a lot of cost and the electric that goes to that even when not, not a soul's in it. So pools, as much as I love them and you all know, they are made to give swim lessons, to help people out. They're a service. They're not going to be a moneymaker. They're never going to be.
But it does generate revenue.
Exactly.
Doesn't make any money, but it generates revenue.
It generates revenue and it does. And honestly, we've been very successful generating revenue before COVID. I mean, we generated, our, our biggest year, we were generating, you know, close to $400,000. Of course, you all give us money, but we're turned down to $400,000 of revenue. 10 years ago, it was 70,000. And so we went up 200 or $300,000 of our own revenue that we've made during passes and programming. But you know, that goes down. Obviously, the COVID year was just.
No, revenue generation had, had been on a very positive trend to be sure. We'll find the same thing with even the jail, for instance. The revenue went down during COVID, but the expenses didn't so much.
Yes, sir. I wish you would have been there. But I thank you guys for your time. I probably did more than, than you needed, but I appreciate it.
All right.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Um, Shelby Gill, Princeton Drive.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Uh, first of all, let me express our appreciation for the funds, uh, for stormwater drainings problems that we had out in the area. We got that accomplished. Uh, and the people whose property it impacted are very pleased with the work that was done. But let's move on. Uh, I've had some discussions with Magistrate Davis and a couple of others after he called me that, uh, there's a possibility of setting up a sewage sanitation district, uh, here in the county. Let me tell you, I, from my perspective, it's way overdue, uh, for this county. Uh, on the west side of the county, we have Rockwell Village, Tree Haven, Yorktown and Burna Hills, all that have packaged plants. The average life of them is about 45 plus years. They're old, they're deteriorating. Two of them are critical on failure. Yorktown and Rockwell Village. They're at the critical level of failing. Yet they fail, it affects a lot of folks. Tree Haven and Burna Hills, their plants are marginal. I've been involved with the Burna Hills plant since we took it over in 1994. We're fighting weakly to keep it up to state standards. My estimation is marginal. But each of the plants services approximately 150 homes. That's about 600 individuals in each of those homes. What happens if they go down? Those plants take time to repair, replace and to maintain. If a sanitation district is set up and operated, basically I'm seeing the west part of this county is set to explode in population. Housing prices in my subdivision have gone up tremendously over the last year. We have a hospital being built in the, on the, uh, Winchester side of Lexington. Anderson Homes is wanting to get started on their subdivision and to get their property up and moving. If we have this influx of people coming in, what happens? Our tax base goes up here in the county. That's going to cost money. And it's going to cost some time to get this sanitation district up and running. But let me tell you, from my perspective and others that I've talked with, it's critical that we get it done before we lose these plants out there in western part of county. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelby. That's all we've got on, uh, public comments. Moving on to the regular agenda, review of the treasurer's report. Uh, any questions for Alicia? Okay, seeing none. Discussion of properly funding the insurance account that is currently deficient. Alicia?
So what we discussed at the last meeting is that the, um, insurance account, I was giggled. Was getting low and, um, we would need to make it, I, I would probably need to make a decision at the next meeting. Well, that time is here. Um, the account is not sufficient to uncover current bills. And we need to decide how we're going to pay those bills. Um, my suggestion is that we, uh, we look authorized on the general fund, um, to pay the, uh, by the current outstanding bills. At, but then the remaining bills for the month of May until we make the June trades. But if there, if, but if there's another suggestion that I'm available that to.
So we need to create a line item?
It would already be paid from the health insurance of line item, from the deal fund.
What you're asking for, correct me if I'm wrong, Alicia, is permission to pay bills as we receive them from the general fund if there are not available funds in the insurance account. Is that correct?
That is, that is correct. And that is, that line item is a, um, is a pre-authorized line item as well. So I could pay them, um, prior to the court meeting.
It has to be paid.
They do.
Mm-hmm.
I have a problem with it. Do you need a motion?
I think so.
I'd make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second it.
Okay, note for the minutes, a motion has been made by Magistrate Konstantopoulos, seconded by Magistrate Davis to pay any bills for insurance that cannot be paid from the insurance account from the general fund.
For this month.
For this month only?
For this month.
For this month only?
Yeah. Cause we need to be aware if we're not.
Okay.
I think, in my opinion.
That can't be paid from.
The insurance.
Insurance account.
So, so you're saying cover the deficit from the insurance account with general funds account for this month?
For this month.
For this month, okay.
So, so Robert, when we do the transfer for the health insurance, we should go back to paying that.
We'll go back and do that.
But we need to be alert. I don't think it should be open for 12 months.
That's fine.
Would that cause any issues with the time lag between the first meeting of next month? Or should we be all right on that?
Well, I usually do the transfer at the last meeting of the month prior, so it should be.
Okay.
All right.
No legal issues with that?
I think that's the reason we wanted to vote on it. So there wouldn't be any legal issues. Um, but. Mitchell, if you've got an opinion?
I do not. I can ask William and get back with you on that.
Okay. They are all pre-authorized bills, but the question was, you know, if the intention of the court was to pay them from the insurance account and the insurance account couldn't cover the whole bill, um, was it the court's intention to cover those from the general fund or not? Just wanted to clarify by order that we can.
So would we go back and do a transfer after the fact to that account to make the budget right?
I don't think we have to. Do we have to?
There's availability in that line item is what I'm understanding.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe at the end of the year we could if we just wanted it for the sake of track.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So you know how much you spent out of that line item. So when you budget for the next year, it's going to give you a false reading. If you take, like we did, like you did in this budget, you're taking the 75% and make it for the next year to the 100%, your number's going to be way off.
Yeah, you're going to track it, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So are we, are we, and I may not understand what we're doing here. I don't think I do actually. Are we asking to do a transfer without court approval?
No.
Just going to take it out of the general fund period?
Paying bills, I'm paying the current outstanding bills and bills I received in the month of May for, um, for the insurance.
And those bills?
From the general fund.
Out of a line item?
Out of a line item.
That has available funds?
Yes.
Line item does have available funds. Okay.
Paying it directly from the general fund, no transfer involved.
Okay, understand. Thank you. Sorry for the questions, but thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Item number 15, discussion regarding the county budget. Um, I don't know if we should ask people who are here to speak about the budget or the magistrates just want to go one at a time? Do you have any preference? Well, we'll just ask questions of people. Magistrate Thompson?
I don't have anything right now, Judge. I've just barely been into it. I've only had it for a couple of days. So, um, I'm sure I will have questions. I do have some written down, but I'm not ready to get into it.
Magistrate Konstantopoulos?
I'm good, Judge. Thank you.
Magistrate Blanton?
At some point, I think we ought to just take this budget and go line by line and have explanation of why some of these have gone up and what the status of them are and what we come up with these numbers. But if you don't want to do it today, that's fine. But I think at some point in time, we need to take and sit down and go, uh, line by line through it. So we know, uh, what we're doing. Cause I do have some questions, uh.
I'm happy to go through it. That's why I put it on the agenda.
Let's just go through it line by line then.
You need to go to the restroom?
Yeah.
Judge, should we consider moving this to the last part of the agenda in case there are folks here that don't want to sit through this discussion? I mean, I'd be happy for them to sit through it. There may be people here that don't want to sit through the budget discussion.
I have no problem with that.
It just could take a while.
The issue is we already approved the agenda, so I don't know how we would do that properly.
Maybe everybody here for the budget. I don't know. Also, Magistrate Blanton, we could, if you, if you want, uh, save this discussion for the next meeting. Cause we're not voting on this today, are we, Judge?
No, but I, here's my thought. Um, it would probab, we need to have the first reading at the next meeting. I mean, that's really close to the, the June 1st.
We'll either have a special call meeting or do it today, one of the other.
If you want to do that, that's fine with me too. I just think we need to go through.
I, I don't disagree with that.
And I think you and I've had that discussion. So if you want to do tables or special meeting, that's fine with me. I just, I just think we need to do it before we have the first reading.
Yeah.
I would fully support a special meeting.
That's fine with me. I just, just as long as we get to go through the numbers.
Yeah, I don't disagree. I think, I think, uh, we, I think everybody knows we need to have the discussion. I'm okay with a special call meeting. I don't know about Magistrate Konstantopoulos or Magistrate Davis.
It's fine with me.
I wouldn't want, if there's people here today who intended to go through their budgets, I'd like them to go ahead and do that.
I have no problem with it either.
Let's take a bite out of it while we can.
Yep, agreed. I think that's a good idea.
Okay, so let's, uh, let's start off with Parks and Rec. They're here. We know they're here. Uh.
I think he pretty well did it.
I think he's already did it.
He's already done it.
Any further questions for Parks and Rec?
Did you want to add anything?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things that you needed to approach there.
Okay, sure.
Just a couple of quick things that I think that they forgot, but we didn't add to, uh, the fairgrounds. You know, we mowed the fairgrounds. A lot of people don't realize that. And honestly, we didn't put it on our, we didn't put it on our, uh, inventory because we don't have a playground out there, swing sets, et cetera. But the disc golf course is there. And the county, uh, fairgrounds lets us use that and, and in return, we mow that property. So it's, it's quite a bit of property as well. Um, and then the final thing is just to remind you guys, I think I sent out an email, but, uh, there is a master plan that's being developed by Grant. It's a $40,000 grant we got through the National Parks Recreation.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so I've contacted the newspapers, tried to do an article about it, just so people see when they get these surveys to vote for what improvements they want to see that way when we do things. Cause it. when we do things, because of what we hear is, well, we don't get any input on what we're doing.
Can I make a comment on the surveys?
Sure.
And this is something a few people have brought up to me, and this is just in regards to the playground, I don't know if, if, if it affects future surveys, you may or may not do, but, uh, apparently the surveys aren't being run directly through the Parks and Rec, it's through some other organization?
Yes, Ome, Ome's is the, the organization that's running the grant.
But what do you have, no, 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 not the grant, I'm talking about the surveys for the, uh, when, when you were asking people to fill out surveys online for the color of the park?
Oh, that, right.
Yeah.
That was just, yeah, that was Facebook, that was just a Facebook.
So is that the same kind of survey you're talking about now?
No, not at all.
This will be a, this will be a full survey with, with questions about what you want to see in each park, what you feel about each park, this kind of thing.
Okay, yeah, was it better together, is that what you ran it through?
No, no, it's different.
Okay, yeah, whatever the better together thing was, people were confused as to why they were going through better together, I don't know, really know much more about it than that, but.
Yeah, that wasn't ours.
Wasn't the Parks Department.
Okay, okay, all right then.
But I, is this going to be Survey Monkey, is this going to be paper copy, how they're going to do this? Because when I talked to them, I didn't ask that question.
No, it's, it's, it's going to be something that they develop through their, that they've used in other parks, master plans they've done before, uh, so it won't be anything like that, but I've taken it, it does take but a few minutes, um, and again, you know, we're not going to discount the fact that there are certain projects that have to be completed regardless of what the survey says. You know, we still have to surface courts, we still have to replace playground equipment, things like that, but just allowing the community to have some input on what type of projects go into the parks is what the purpose of it.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure there is accessible to everyone as possible.
Right. Yes, and that's the goal for, that's the reason why we want to get that, and also, uh, actually, Mr. Blanton was the one who mentioned at our last board meeting to try to get an article in The Sun, and I've contacted them, I haven't heard back yet, but we are wanting to get that out to the community that way, because when the first initial discussions, they were supposed to be here six months ago doing this, but because of COVID, it got put back, so a lot of people had forgotten, and then they started getting phone calls and they think they're spam calls, uh, so it's been, the, the COVID thing has really thrown that wrench in that as well.
Okay. Anything else on Parks and Rec?
Did you, one more time?
Yes, sir.
What was the amount that you asked for from the county? I know it was a $400,000 number.
Yes, sir, and I got here, I'll give you the exact figure, I don't want to throw it out of my head, we asked for 442, uh, from the county and 482 from the city, and that 40 being for, uh, health insurance, and then, of course, like I said, the recreation budget, the city has a $50,000, had given a $50,000, I don't know if they're going to re-estate that or not.
What do you anticipate getting from the city?
No telling.
Uh, yeah, I, I mean.
What'd you get last year from the city?
Uh, 250.
And one more question, I know before 42 probably is a, a wish list, best case scenario number.
Yes, sir.
What's a worst case scenario number for you?
The 213 of last year was the worst case scenario. Yeah, I mean, I say that, I mean, it can, it can always be worse, but I could see.
No, no, I, I guess, let me rephrase the question, what's a number, the bare bones minimum number you could get by with? Obviously not 213, since you had to come back for more.
Exactly, so, well, if, if it were distributed equally, yeah, we're talking, I mean, we were, just to pay the bills and nothing extra, you know, I said extra, nothing.
I knew what you meant.
Worked out of me there.
Extra.
Extra, um, I would say, you know, 300,000 would probably put us in a position where we're not begging for money, and then, and again, bare bones, we've done that for a while, I mean, so we're, we're really close.
No, I get it, I get it, and I appreciate you, honestly, thank you, thank you for that.
Greg, what I was looking at, if you take the, uh, 264 from 2018 and do 5% a year, you're at 291. And I think the sheriff usually does 5% a year when he does his budget, so if you take the 2018 figure of 264, 5% a year, about 291.
Jeff, you meeting with the city on Monday?
Yes, sir.
Will you communicate with the judge?
Absolutely.
Kind of what you think, what kind of feel you get there?
Absolutely.
And I would be good with that number myself, 291.
Well, and again, like you said, uh, we, in taking into account that capital construction gets thrown in there, I agree, that money's money, so if we get that capital construction, it's fine, but I just don't want to see the general budget go down to the point where we can't pay bills, that's, I mean, we're not looking for anything extra.
I was looking for an operational number that you'd have.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you, I have nothing for that.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, Perry, come on up. Are you just doing CSEP, or are you going to cover?
I'm trying to repeat that.
Okay, I just, I didn't know what your last point was.
We, we can do it jointly if need be, sir.
Okay.
I'll, I volunteer because I have a funeral to go to in about five minutes.
Oh, I understand, well hustle then.
I'm trying. Uh, good morning, uh, my name is Perry Gary Wilson, and I am the interim CSEP director as a result of Mr. Efferson's retirement in November. I would ask that that be changed to CSEP director in the near future if at all possible. I know the concern initially was if my payroll would be reversed, and I've had several reverses since my point. Um, I'm going to pass out to you the budget that I gave to Alicia and Judge Pace on April the 16th. Take one and pass it on to her.
Does this include the change for the, uh?
It does.
Okay.
To keep the lights on, yes, sir. There's a joke to that, guys, and I'll tell you what it is, we were looking at the budget and Alicia said, um, you don't have utilities, and I was like, oh, I don't, she said, we, we do want to keep the lights on, and I'm like, oh, yeah, I'm so sorry, so I went back and added my utilities to that line, I was taking CSO obviously at that point when I was preparing it. You will see it's a sizable increase than it was last year, and that is because we have two major projects that are going to be taking place. Uh, the result, uh, kind of started with a phone call from East Kentucky Power in January, and a gentleman named Nick Comer with East Kentucky Power called, he said, hey, we're downsizing our infrastructure, that's a result of the fact that we no longer have the Ford power plant, and so we don't, we no longer need the Ford tower.
Hey Perry, can you pull the mic now?
Oh, sure.
Thank you. Some online people don't care.
I forgot.
That's my bad.
Uh, he said, that's a result of the fact that we are no longer going to have the Ford, uh, power plant, so we no longer need the Ford tower, and you've got to understand that the Ford tower has repeaters for all responders in our community, whether they be county or city, uh, with communication, we, I've heard a lot of talk about city versus county and county versus city, with responders, there is no such thing in reality. Uh, I might live in the county, but I might need the city to respond if I need, my husband airlifted if he gets hurt working on the farm, or someone else, uh, and it goes both ways, so with responders, it's important that they have the ability to hear each other and communicate with dispatch as well, and that's why the towers are important, we have several towers, and in all of those towers, we have repeaters, and those repeaters are not cheap, that's another reason why we have a special communication line, we have 250,000 already promised to us by CSEP in our upcoming budget to replace some repeaters. Now, you may say, 250,000, that's a lot of money, the average repeater costs between 25 and 29,000 apiece. Now, we're not going to replace all repeaters if they're still good and functional, obviously, but we'll replace, replace those that are deteriorating and need to be replaced. Um, then another thing that's special as far as the Ford, uh, Ford tower is obvious, and I have some pictures of it, it's in excellent condition, and as of two weeks ago, we were offered by East Kentucky Power to buy it for $1, but there is some legality, so it has to be ironed out, and the legal minds between the county and the, and East Kentucky Power will do that, but we're very hopeful that that will take place. Uh, the real concern is the Urban Road Tower, and I'm going to pass out pictures to that as well. We had to have a, a program called Mission Critical Partners, it's a, uh, it's a, it's a company, it's a, it's a construction company, basically, but it's FEMA construction, and those folks came in, they actually helped build the, uh, Emergency Operations Center, so they're not strangers to our community, and they also come in about once a year and take a tower site visit to make sure that those towers are properly taken care of. These are just a few of the pictures that I took on April 23rd of the Urban Road Tower, which was requested by FEMA. Um, they, they went out, they made physical assessments, they went out, physically took pictures, went to the properties, um, Chief Asbury, uh, Chuck Steele, myself, we went with them to the Ford Tower, and they were able to tell us, we're going to give you 47,000 for, um, the Ford Tower, and 277 for the Urban Road Tower, and you may say, well, why is it so much more? Well, you, the pictures are worth a thousand words, they will tell you why, the Ford, the Urban Road Tower is in, is in bad shape, uh, a little bit of neglect, a little bit of, um, oversight, and she needs a lot of TLC, um, the building, it's destroyed, there are a few pictures of the building in that group, but not all of them, you're welcome to see all of them, I can email them to you, that I have. Uh, we've also not really had a schedule of taking care of the tower sites as far as maintenance is concerned, I heard maintenance a lot from Jeff, and I echo what he says, you, you have to, if you take care of something that you possess, if you are good stewards, then you, uh, it pays in the long run, because maintenance is a lot cheaper than renovation, redoing. Um, the other lines are kind of speak for themselves, um, the emergency management lines are the sirens, of course, and then, of course, the city-county lines, which has to do with the fuel for the EM Director's truck, um, also for, uh, his portion of his salary, we haven't quite got that figured out yet, but you've got to understand that once we do, uh, the average, for example, the average, uh, 1801, which is the reimbursement top term for it, that I did for Mr. Efferson, gave back the county, uh, $800 a month just for his emergency management position, that did not meet the CSEP reimbursement. Um, you've got to understand that when I get a word from FEMA through KYEM, through CSEP, and that, yes, I have to go through all those doors, uh, and they tell us that we're going to work something out for you, then that means it's passed through money. Uh, those of you who were with us during the DES meeting on Monday, I'm going to echo what I said during that meeting, I like things in writing, I like for you to put it in writing so I can see, yes, I'm going to give you back your money, yes, for sure, uh, they're not quite that way, and as I said on Monday, I'm having to learn to roll with it, the way that they play, I, I don't like that, but I'm seeing that in the end, they do what they say they're going to do, even if it's just across the board and a handshake. Any questions?
I do have a question, and I know, like you said, and, and we kind of had this discussion with Gary last year, um, with his budget, of course, he never ended up, we talked about how he may need to amend the budget to spend all the money he wanted to spend, but he ended up not spending it before it got out the door, so, didn't matter, um, but would it be possible to, what I don't want to do is to spend $800,000 on two towers, have something happen and be caught with the bill, would it be possible to do one first, get reimbursed, and then do the other later, or do they have to happen at the same time?
Well, there, I don't think it's possible to choose one over the other.
Uh-huh.
Because of the locations, the extreme locations in the county that they are, and the purpose that they represent, however, with the way the wheels turn in the process, it's very slow, and even though Gary's purchases were kind of really all at once, when you think about it, we didn't get the actual items in, for example, we just got the second truck in that we ordered in September for, um, for the Winchester Fire Department, the county fire department came two months prior, so even though we may put things in motion, the actual invoice that we get to pay those bills doesn't come that quickly.
I, I guess my thought is, $800,000 is a lot of money, even in, in our budget, I mean, that's a considerable percentage of our budget, if we end up in a position where we're waiting on reimbursement for that, it could cause problems with the general fund account, I think.
Absolutely, yeah, I agree, I don't disagree with you on that, I just don't see how we, what do you propose that we do first?
Well, I was thinking if, if one of them's 300,000, the other, maybe we could just do one project?
Mm-hmm.
Get it reimbursed, then do the other one.
Well, the one that's in greater need is Urban Road. Rec, you would agree with me on that?
That is correct. The Urban Road Tower i- is the primary communications tower for the entire county, but also, with that being said, we also have to move on Ford Tower rather quickly too, because when East Kentucky Power does relocate or move all their equipment out, we have to be able to take possession of that tower, uh, at that point, so.
But the money we're spending on the Ford Tower isn't to take possession, I mean, that's a dollar.
Not to take possession, but we have to have it in working condition at that point, and that's what that money is going to do, is bring it up to the standard that we need it to be.
Okay, and what would happen if, I don't know, let's just say, for some reason, something happened with the federal government and we weren't reimbursed, could we, do we need to arrange it so that the city is kind of a, on the hook with us as well?
Where there was three people doing the work, we may now be dealing with one person, and that person's sitting at home doing the work.
Yeah, I know almost everyone with the state's working from home, I got that.
It's a little difficult process, that's why it's taking a little bit longer than it used to do, uh, you know, what we're accustomed to.
Perry?
Sir?
The money for these towers, is this the money that you said Monday that comes available at the end of the year when they have extra money, or is this from a different part of money?
Yes, that's what the gentleman with the Mission Critical was referring to, yes.
Okay, that's where that money's coming.
The money's from, it's FEMA money from the Army.
Okay, but it doesn't, it, they don't know how much they're going to have left till the end of the year?
No, no, his comment was, they toss money over the fence, and I was like, oh, can I be on the other side of the fence and have a basket?
Okay, I thought that was the same part of money.
It is.
I understand that budget runs from October to September.
That's right.
That's why it's a little different, we run from July to June, so we're having to wait a little longer to see if that money, like Perry said, is being tossed over the fence.
Yes.
But we have to budget for it now in case it is tossed over the fence.
Yeah, I basically work with two real budgets and one false one, if you will, because I have to satisfy county first, uh, C, KYEM second, and then CSEP. KYEM doesn't have a literal budget with me, but the folks at Kentucky Emergency Management have to approve, and then CSEP follows suit, so it's, whoo, it's convoluted at times, and trust me, when I looked at that bottom line figure that I gave you, I was a little sick myself, so, I totally understand.
Should, I guess the, the tower money that we're talking about is in the special CSEP line, correct?
It is.
The 800, so that's what, but really, the tower work is only about 500,000, correct? Or less than 600,000?
Your 250,000 is the repeater replacement, because there are some.
You've got that in your pocket, don't you?
Yeah.
The additionals are, um, to replace the sign at the EOC, uh, to also to, uh, replace the entrance gate, so that it's actually a, a secure gate, uh, our communications sites, the 250,000 for the repeaters, uh, also to replace the microwaves at the Urban Road, our possible upgrades, and including in that, we're also anticipating upgrading our, um, internet capabilities at the EOC, which is going to literally fall possibly in this budget, but because I have money that I have to spend by September of this year, it's going to be in.
It's hard to figure out.
Exactly, exactly.
Right, it, that makes perfect sense, so, I guess, uh, what I wanted to be clear on is the Urban Tower really is 233,000, I think, to, to repair that.
That should be the more expensive one, isn't it?
Uh, was 255, but then it says minus 22,000 for a generator.
It was 277.
Gotcha, okay.
Minus that, and that's how we got.
So it makes it 255 now, so yes, that.
Because when the generator went down during the ICE event, uh, I got permission and immediately started reaching out for quotes and everything, and that's already been processed through the county, the county's procurement policy, I already have a, a vendor that's been hired to do that.
Okay, good, good, so that one is 255, and then 247 for the others, okay, makes Okay, makes sense to me. And so I'm like you, I think it's okay to leave it in the budget. We just have to figure out how we're going to pay for it.
One last thing, sir. Also, understand that this was very difficult for us to negotiate or navigate with KYM and CSEP. They're actually turning a lot of these projects down because it's the end of the life cycle, or the cycle, so to speak. They're, they're going to do a closeout. So I would strongly urge you to put that money in that budget because.
Yeah, it sounds like we better get it done now.
It took a lot of money to get them to agree to replace those at no, well, very little cost to our county.
I believe that the budget as presented reflects exactly what Perry and Steve asked for.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, it does.
It does, it does. And, and your budget does reflect this exactly. So I wanted to clarify what the 852,000 was for. And Perry has explained that perfectly, so. I understand, and it sounds like from listening to the chief, that if we don't spend this money pretty soon, it won't be available for, or possibly won't be available for reimbursement. And the money's going to be spent eventually anyway, so.
Somebody's, somebody's going to spend it.
Yeah, that's what it sounds like, somebody's going to.
Yeah, and that's generally, that's generally what the guy was telling me with FEMA. He said, the end of the year, they have money. They want to spend it. They want to give it away. And I was like, really?
Perry, if I'm not wrong, we actually, we actually cut the budget other than the passive money.
Right.
So, I mean, yes, it looks like we are asking for 800 more thousand, but in essence, that's just passive money, but we actually cut the budget.
Right.
Is that not correct, Perry?
If you take out the tower work, yes, you did cut the budget from 2021 budget.
Because my salary's gone.
And it was tough.
I have two guys, I have two that are gone.
Yeah.
I, I will add just as a, as a note that there is, there are ongoing discussions about bringing in additional staff, perhaps even using an assistant fire chief in an emergency management role, or having Chief Asbury dedicate some of his time. We haven't decided exactly how that's going to go yet, because we're not sure how the budget's working out with the fire department. But I just want to give everybody a heads up on that.
We, we just lost Chuck yesterday, so he retired. So it's just Perry in the building by herself and me sporadically trying to work from my office on the. I'm doing just as much emergency management work right now, if not more, than fire chief work. It's had to take, it's had to take back, the fire chief position's had to take a little bit of a backseat right now because the amount of disasters we've had in our county. We're working through disasters, COVID, the ice storm and flood. And I've had to dedicate a lot of time to that. And Perry needs some help as well with hers, because now Chuck's left, so. I, I'm not saying that, you know, I, I understand everybody's understaffed, but we're becoming severely understaffed.
Let's let Perry get out of here.
Okay.
I moved that back to the normal size.
Thank you, Perry. Let's see, if we have any other, Tony, you want to come up and talk? I know some people have asked questions about your budget, so.
As you know, I took over this program. And we had about six on. I think six to 10 is what we were averaging. And over the last year and a half, we have gone to over 50 on this program at a time. Right now, we probably bring in about 4,000 in revenue every month on top of that. And we're saving the county approximately 40,000 a month, every month. So, that being said, my, my salaries have increased over the last month because I did get additional staff on my payroll. Definitely my monitoring has increased. We had to do a transfer in over the last year because of my funding. This year, I've budgeted for over 70 on. Right now, I have 60 on. And as the county attorney can tell you, we're starting a new program where we expect 20 to 30 to come on over the next couple of weeks. So that will put me probably closer to 80 on by the end of the next couple of months. So our program is expanding. It's definitely saving the county money. And we are definitely starting to see the increase in revenue that comes along with that.
Just for my part, you know, I want to commend Tony for the job that he's done. I agree that he is saving the county quite a bit of money. Personally, I, I hope sometime over the next year, perhaps with some of the information I'm reading on the funds we're getting from the federal government, we can find some way to enhance and perhaps reward some of these employees as well. But the budget I've got before you, I think, represents an increase that we're going to continue to take on. And we've got two employees there now, and that's why it's budgeted the way it is.
Tony, you've done a great job with the department. Appreciate the updates you email out as well.
Any questions for Tony?
Tony, these numbers, I don't know if you've seen them or not, are these numbers, the numbers that you requested? Or are they close to what you requested, or do you have any?
I don't have the numbers that, that was requested, but.
They ought to be pretty close. He and I have gone back and forth a few times over email, so I might have missed something, but.
Well, I just noticed that, that all the salaries are lumped into one, whereas you do have a line item for the coordinator, but they're all lumped into one.
Right, I believe we fell into, like, two years ago. We had a problem with that, so now they're all lumped into one salary.
I think we did the same with the animal shelter, I can't recall.
Are you planning to take your helper from part-time to full-time?
I'm not at this time. One of the reasons I did increase is because I know that I am dangerously close on this sick time that I'm going to have to start taking some time in order for, and then for him to be, so he'll probably be over his 40, you know, his part-time hours at some point during the, during the year.
That's something we'll have to work with Janet to manage.
What is the ETTS line item?
That is just, that ETTS, that is just my basic, like, computers, my files, that kind of stuff, so.
There's a pretty good increase in it, what's that for?
Unfortunately, file folders and paper has gone up tremendously.
That's where you have more people.
Yeah.
I know previously, we had discussions with the previous coordinator and the sheriff. And the sheriff was taking, I think, paying for gasoline or something.
Right, right. As you see, I don't have any gasoline.
That's still the case.
Yeah, I don't have any fuel budget. I don't pay for internet. My drug testing budget has went way down because the jailer does a lot of the drug testing over there. So yes, those kind of things have went way down.
Okay. Just want to make, that wasn't listed, just want to make sure that's still the case.
Sure.
So just to be clear, if anybody's got questions for Tony, I'm not going to make him come again. Just ask him now.
No, I'm good.
Okay?
I'm good.
All right.
Thank you, Tony.
Steve, do you want to cover the fire department?
Sure. Does anybody have any questions for?
Stand by.
Yeah, hold on.
The proposed, now we talked about a little, if I may, Judge.
Go ahead.
The proposed salaries, I know we talked about it a little bit in the fire committee meeting. You're pretty comfortable with the 1.2 number?
It's really close.
It's really close.
Based on one month.
Right.
Yes, sir, based on, based on the month I told you that.
That's kind of what I wanted to get out there. We don't have a lot of a trend to look back at.
We do not. And I'm sorry that we do not have more of a trend, but naturally, we had those disasters. And we trained new employees, so a lot of that money went towards that. We were basically about $1.4 million, and we were trending towards that.
With the disasters factored in.
With the disasters factored in, and that was with less people also.
Correct.
So now we've increased our amount of service for our community with less money. So we hired three more individuals, and I believe instead of 1.4, we'll be right at 1.2. That does not, I misspoke in the fire committee meeting the other day. The only difference in that is we did not factor in, I did not add that number to factoring in one employee retiring in July. So that may be a substantial amount.
Yeah, so I guess the best way to say that is we do only have one month of trend. You did hire more people, have saved some money on overtime.
Yes, sir.
It's still a guess to some extent, but it's the best case, or the best guess we could give on, based on a month.
Yes, sir. In that month that we did not have any disasters or any major incidents, we were right at about $92,000 for two payrolls. So if you do that by 13, 13 months, I know there's only 12 months, but we get paid 26 times. So you have to do it by 13. That's 1,196,000, I believe.
The only other question I have, Judge, it's probably for you. I know we're going to have a significant expense, maintenance-wise, on engine one, I think it is.
That is correct.
Do we have that covered in this year's budget?
We do not.
Okay, we're probably going to have to make a transfer.
Yeah, so we're probably going to have to either make a transfer or do something different with this before we pass it.
We expect to get that truck back by Friday or first of next week.
And that is a second engine rebuild.
That is correct.
Not under warranty, but we're going to ask the county attorney to look at that and see if he can help us maybe get some of that covered.
Yes, sir. If you want me to, I'll be brief, but to let the court know about it. Our newest engine, we've been having trouble out of the motor with it.
Not the newest. You're going to confuse people.
Prior to the, prior to engine three and the new tanker that I just showed you, our newest one back in 2016 that was purchased, the Sutphen engine, we've had major engine trouble out of it. And it was covered under warranty warrants before. I don't believe that the situation was corrected on the maintenance that was done on the engine. Now we're having to rebuild the motor once again. But since that time, the engine has failed out of warranty. So I don't believe it was ever corrected, in my opinion.
And if you look at the billing, there's almost a timeline of continual repairs related to the engine.
That is correct. We have it all documented. So I'm going to let the county attorney see if we want to go. I don't know what the terminology would be, but I think that we have good cause to.
Yeah, it almost seems like a lemon status engine.
It is a lemon.
It has been, it has been, it has been repaired, 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 rebuilt, repaired, repaired, repaired. Now it needs rebuilt again. It's an underpowered Cummins, is what it is.
Yes, sir. So.
Robert?
Couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Mine had to do with that 12 to 10, again, is salaries. That number includes existing staffing levels, no new, no new positions, no new.
No, sir, it does not.
Less overtime, but full-time employees, current level, no new positions.
That is correct. We, we increased our staffing by three people. So we went from 1.4, working about 15 to 16 employees. Now we are working 24 employees.
I know at one time you suggested you needed a couple of more, I think, at one time.
Well, we're after a grant for that. We do need more people, but I'm waiting to see if we get a grant.
And if he gets the grant, we'll have to amend the budget.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
But Magistrate Blanton reminded me of something else that we may not have in here that we may want to look at as an assistant fire chief.
Well, I mentioned that just like five minutes ago, Greg.
I missed it.
We do not have that included because we haven't worked out.
I was focused on other things, Judge, sorry.
It's, it's just that we either need to hire an assistant chief and make him partly a deputy EM director as well, or we need to look at hiring a full-time EM director.
But that's not included, that's another story.
No, sir, that is. And that we haven't worked out, not only that, we've saved the county all the salary on the EM side. I've done that basically for free. And that's why we were talking about amending how I get paid, because we can't seek my reimbursement.
Reimbursement, correct.
Because we're not paying out of an EM line item. We're only paying out of the fire chief's line item.
And then the other question, this is probably the last one. You were talking about engine one and the two new trucks. And I'm a big supporter of doing a capital plan so we can depreciate equipment, put funding in it so we know when we're going to replace it.
Yes, sir.
As opposed to just coming up one month, well, I need this, and the next month, I mean, I need this. And then we don't know what we're going to spend until the end of the year, because all of a sudden, we need all this stuff. Equipment-wise, are we anticipating anything in the coming year? There's nothing in here, that's why I ask.
We are not, because I didn't budget for it, so I'm not asking for it. But the next following budget year, we've discussed in fire committee meeting, if we wanted to go ahead and purchase two engines. Had everything without the trouble with our current engine one, we were going to be on a schedule, on a, basically a five to six-year timeline. That way, we, we knew when the new engine had to come up.
And you and I talked about this, and I would encourage every department to do a long-range schedule of equipment needs, to appreciate them out so we know two, three, four years in advance.
Yes, sir.
What we're going to be needing. That way, we can, we know what, we can plan for it. And that's just, I think we, and I've preached this since I've been on the court. We don't do that, but we need to have some way of long-term budget for these long-term expenditures so that we know when they're going to depreciate, when they're going to fail, and replace them accordingly.
I agree, sir. Unfortunately, with the current engine one situation. We may look at having to purchase two trucks instead of just one.
I understand.
Engine two was going to be the next one. It's a 2012 model. We're right at about 10 years, so, and that's, we've done real good. It's starting to money us a little bit now. You can see that in, we'll know next year also, we're going to break down the budget. We're not doing it at the county level. But within my department, we're actually going to have line items for specific trucks. That way, I could come to you and show you, this is how much this truck is costing you.
Yeah, we talked about that.
So in the fire committee meeting, we've discussed two versus one. And I think we have a plan for it. You're welcome.
Any other questions for the chief?
I just have one for whoever wants to answer it. It may not be a big deal, just curiosity. We increased the fire department's salaries, which makes perfect sense, but the retirement contribution, we didn't. Does that not need to go coincide? But I also see it's only 80% expended this year, so.
That's.
That's what happened.
So we overbudgeted a little bit?
Spending the, have the total.
Answer your own question.
Yeah, that's kind of what I thought, but I just wanted to clarify.
One other thing that Robert Ossel mentioned, a piece of equipment, was a boat. Because we discussed a boat, but we're writing a grant for the boat. So we're waiting to see if we get the grant, and then we'll ask for it.
And that, the fire.
It's a rescue boat. I currently have a boat motor on it.
I know Gary talked about that as far as, that's probably.
Yes, sir, Gary talked about that. And the way Gary was trying to get it is it's not possible. It's not on our approved equipment list, so it is not possible to buy that through emergency management or CSEP funding. We'll have to make that purchase through the county. But we do, well, we do know it's possible for the boat, that's why we put it in there. Go in October if we get that.
I do want to commend Chief Asbury. I mean, one of the things that we talked about in the interview process with him was just the lack of grant funding that had been pursued in the past. And I think he's got three to four open grants that he's applied for. You know, you're always going to be told no if you don't ask. So I just want to commend you on making the effort.
I appreciate that, sir. Trevor Holliday, a young man in our department, has been instrumental in writing those grants for us. We've worked together, and he, he's doing a fantastic job. I just want his name thrown out there as well. Any other questions? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Alan Curtis?
Good, Judge, I want to see if you have questions.
I got a few people might have questions. Are there any for either compost, solid waste, road?
I got a, you don't care if I go first, I guess?
Sure, go ahead. Come on up, Alan.
Just, first, just a general question. And I talked to Alicia about this just briefly the other day. As we, as we go down the road with the composting and the dead animal removal, it appears to me, we don't have any separate line item budgets for that, except for the compost grant. We throw, throw most of that into there. And I'm sure you don't want those funds expended from your road department money. We couldn't do it in the first place. But it appears to me we're going to need some separate line item accounts to cover those expenses, you know, fuel, equipment repairs, and things like that. But I didn't see anything in here to look for that.
I believe it's all merged under the solid waste, so we're going to put all of those entities under the solid waste office. And I think those have labor, fuel, materials. They should have line items for those, the draft I've seen.
Let's go back here and see, hold on.
Yeah, road's just completely different. 06, is that, is that it? 06, is that the account for solid waste? Yeah, it should, it should be broken down.
06 is specifically the.
It has a fuel account, but there's nothing budgeted.
We, that is, all those numbers are given to, to us whenever we are approved for the grant, and they budget out those numbers before us. And so we just put it in a contingent, I would put it, I would put it in a contingent line item until we add those numbers.
Yeah, we applied for another 200 and some thousand dollar grant for composts.
And we don't know what will be approved, if any.
And so we didn't want to, we didn't want to put any numbers in there until we knew the amount of the grant.
Right.
If we were approved at all.
And then if we get the grant, it would be populating those.
And they will populate it for you. They will tell you what you can spend it on.
Yeah, what you can spend it on, like the previous one.
I, I guess my end result, I just, I just want to be. I guess my end result here, I just, I just wanna be able to track. Assuming we don't get grants, to be able to track what the total cost is gonna be for the composting and the dead animal removal. Really didn't give us that option here because it's either, we got two line items for solid waste travel and animal pickup, and then you go back to the compost grant, so.
Yeah, I think the compost, whatever that account code was, I think that's disappearing, and it's all gonna be pulled under solid waste.
Right, right, right. It is, yeah. So I just wanna make sure that as we go down this road, that we don't have to create accounts in order to track the total expense, because at some point in time, I'd like to know what we know what it was costing us to contract it out.
Yes.
And I just wanna know what was.
Right now, I mean, if you're just being inquisitive, I mean, we're running right now at about $40 a day.
Yeah, and I realize that. I just wanna make sure that in the long term, if the grants dry up, what we're gonna be spending.
Yeah, there's reports. There's a lot, so.
Thank you.
Good question. Anybody else?
Alan, you're comfortable with the $10,000 in the animal pickup line item?
That is just there as a backup. So right now, we're providing this service with one truck and one employee. So when I spoke to Countryside, they're there in the event of something happens to our truck, or we can't respond in a timely manner, depending on the number of animals that are called in that day. So the judge and I wanted to have a little cushion there. So that $10,000 is set aside just for a contractor cost in the event of a backup.
Basically countrywide.
Yeah, yeah, that'd cover about 100 heads. So, you know, that's just there for a backup emergency, correct.
So that line item's gonna come down from probably spending $80,000 this year to maybe $10,000 next year.
Correct. Hopefully not, but.
Hopefully not, that's right. But we're projecting worst case scenario.
We got one guy and one truck, so it's a big county. We've already done, I think, over 80 animals in 29 days, so.
Alan, what equipment purchases are you projecting?
For which department, sir?
Road, sorry.
Road, well, we've got one on the agenda today. I think equipment, equipment-wise, next year.
You've got a lot less money budgeted. I just curious what you're planning.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're right there. We're right there.
Are you okay with the 50,000?
Yeah, and that's just in the event, you know, we have to, you know, do something with a hot box or, you know, anything like that, that, you know, I just wanted to have something there just in case.
I'm trying to get back to find it. It seemed like fleet vehicles yet.
That's our, that's our, that's our concern right now. So I guess in years past, during budget cycles, the term dump truck was used in different methods. And to me, a dump truck is the large, really big dump trucks. So it's our smaller fleet vehicles is what we named those, which is our ton, ton and a half trucks, our everyday vehicles. And we've got a pretty aged fleet. As you all know, we lost one in a vehicle accident back in the snow event. That was one of the new, new Fords. And we've got one with 50 some thousand miles with a blow motor. They want 20 grand to fix. Not happening. We've got a couple of 2012, 2013 models that are still there. We've got a couple of single wheels, which are pretty much useless to us other than following tractors during mowing season. So our small vehicle fleet is our, our next demand. And I have a replacement planned for that, Robert, over the next five years.
I do have one more question, if I may, Judge. Solid, solid waste, salaries goes from 22 to 60?
That's because that accounts for the full-time employee that you guys approved back a few months ago.
And there's some overtime built in on that, too.
Yeah, and there's a little bit of overtime, and that also includes my salary as the solid waste coordinator.
That's not a new employee. That's just, because we haven't had a full year of it. That's the full year total. Okay.
Correct, correct. Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And that's the gentleman that's doing the.
Yes.
The call.
Yeah, Nathan.
Yeah, Nathan.
You may have, Alan, but if you could, or Judge, I wouldn't mind seeing that plan that.
The replacement plan.
The replacement plan that Alan just mentioned.
Yeah, we've got an Excel spreadsheet with all of our trucks and, you know.
He's even got it color-coded, I believe.
Yeah, it's color-coded by year, tractors, and, you know, all, all that stuff, so.
I think I saw that, but.
Yeah, I can email it. I can email it.
Why don't you just send it to the court, or send it to Dana, and have her disperse it? That way, everybody cut their eyes on it.
Is your plan three of fleet vehicles this year, or this?
Yeah, it's gonna be three this year, just because of the loss that we had. And I also want you to keep in mind, you know, we, we have about, I think it was 92,000 in insurance proceeds from the burnt dump truck and the one that was lost in the collision. So, you know, that 250, 90 of it technically, you know, was insurance proceeds to help replace two of the three.
Okay, thank you.
Alan, there's a, on the road department, there's a federal highway sign regulation that's went from 3,000 down to zero. What changed there?
Well, I think what it.
And if you, if you don't mind, for my benefit, what, what is that?
Well, what it is, is the, there's like a highway safety improvement plan. So the regulations changed. So street signs used to be in all capitals. Now it's just the first letters in capital and then the small letters. So that was, I believe, the way the previous administrator used to track what it was actually costing to do signage. And after speeding, speaking with the treasurer and the judge, we're trying to condense some of these line items because, you know, road materials is signs and, you know, things of that nature. So it was just, it cut down on transfers, anything like that. So that, that money is to replace stop signs and name signs and things of that nature.
So it's not really that gone. It's just been moved to a different line item?
Yes, it's just been moved into road materials.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else?
Good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis.
Thank you, Alan.
Hey, Judge, I'd like to make one comment. I know I'm not, but I'd like to brag on you guys that this is first with first target, the reciprocal relationship between county and everybody. We take care of Stoney Brook this part of mowing, but these guys have come out and helped us with things that was beyond our limits. And in the last fiscal year as well, they did that track at College Park, which we never could've done at the scout project, because those guys have stepped up and never we got to. To the ability we got to. I just wanna thank those guys. We really appreciate it. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, the jail is not ready to talk today, correct?
I think we can give a brief, yeah.
Okay.
We're not ready to give you too much of a number.
Well.
We are all sitting down, aren't we?
What's that?
We are all sitting down, if you wanna throw it out there.
I'm sorry, I still.
I said, we are all sitting down, if you wanna throw that number out there.
Oh, okay.
We're not laying down, Travis.
We, we are, I'm guessing here, I've not looked at all of the other departments, but we're probably the most complicated in terms of moving parks. Would that be an accurate statement? So we're still a work in process. We had another jail committee meeting this morning with Jailer Doyle, Magistrates Elkins and Thompson, our treasurer, Alicia, and Lieutenant Newsom. Went through the numbers again, and I think we're in agreement on just about everything, but we're at payroll now. And so Magistrates Elkins and Thompson and I are gonna meet later this week or early next week. We're asking for significantly more than we're gonna wind up with this year, but it's still an $80,000 cut from the last full year, 2020. We're, you know, we're competing with the federal and state government unemployment. Our starting wage is $11 an hour. They can sit at home and make more money. A lot of our applicants come in, and it's just to check the box so that they can continue to receive their unemployment. So the number that we, we're projecting, or we need to staff this jail 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, that's what we need. We're probably not gonna get there because we can't get enough people to apply. I'm at McDonald's, and there's a sign that says, "We'll hire you for a dollar more than we pay." And they don't have to wrestle with criminals or put their lives in danger or the stress. The stress of not having enough staff, and again, it's, it's COVID, it's the governor letting inmates out that cut our revenue. But essentially, the problem with not having enough staff is it has stressed out the staff we do have, and we've lost good staff with a lot of training. So we're having to retool that. So the, the other item that I really, I'm not ready to discuss now, Judge, you and I spoke about it at lunch last week, and Greg and Travis, we spoke this morning, is we have an opportunity. While our revenues with the state are going down, we hope that they start coming back up. I hate to say, we hope people reoffend so we can get paid for them, but it's gonna happen. We might as well get paid. We have another opportunity for revenue to try to make up for any shortfall. And that's what I don't wanna get too far into because we have 73 competitors. I don't want to tell them what we're doing. And we also have the opportunity. I don't wanna scare them off. And I'd be happy to, you know, it's like any business deal. I'd be happy to sit down with all of you in private and go through that. But Magistrates Elkins and Thompson are intimately aware of that. So we hope to have a final budget, and I told Frank on the way over, I said, considering we just finished up this year's budget last month, I think we're light years ahead this year. So any questions for me before I turn it over to Jailer Doyle?
To put that in perspective, and correct me if I'm wrong, Frank, but in the last 13 months, we went from 130 state inmates to 57 this morning.
We had 57 this morning. You know, it's something we don't have any control over.
Lost six as recent as last week, so.
We had six of the people that was charged with murder. We lost, we transported them to the prison, I think, one day last week. So, you know, they're starting to, that's the first movement we have seen. There, again, there's been no movement of any inmates amongst facilities, period, whether it's prison, whoever, which I'm glad when you, when you have the violent offenders, such as those people, I'm glad to get them out of there. I know year four last, we had, I think, 23 people charged with murder in, that we were housing over here in the jail. So anytime we can get those on to the prison where they need to be, I'm, I'm all for it. You know, I appreciate you all taking the time and, and especially Mr. Elkins and Mr. Thompson and, and everybody. Just, all of us trying to get on the same page and educating ourselves what it is, you know. We're no different than anybody else. It's like Jeff said, the park's a park. It don't matter if anybody comes in or not. You still got that level of cost, and that's where we're at. We, we have improved our management, I think, significantly. You know, we have improved our way that our time has been handled. Our overtime is tracked now. We can see every bit of overtime we have. The problem we have is we can track it all. We just don't have any method of knowing when it's gonna happen. We had this conversation this morning, Mr. Elkins and us did. You know, when you look at your payroll, it's not the proper wording, but it is what it is. We don't know how many people's gonna go to the hospital this year. Anytime somebody goes to the hospital, we're at a staffing level now that we're strictly into overtime. At one point last year, we had four people in four different hospitals paying overtime for 24 hours a day to keep those covered. So, you know, and we have to be careful because, you know, our state restrictions, legality is, we have to, per Capitol head, how many people's in this jail, we have to have a certain amount of deputies in that building. But, but I think we're making great progress between Ernie, Mr. Elkins, Mr. Thompson. I think they're, they're keeping the grass mowed, let me tell you. They're, they're not letting it grow underneath their feet. They're staying on top of it. I appreciate it. If anybody has any questions, we'd be glad to answer them or help with them. I know Magistrate Davis has even here a couple of meetings ago, who has had, you know, talking about talking to people, League of Cities. I explained to him here in a few weeks, we'll have a conference. I'm gonna try and have that conversation with our board members. I'm on the board of directors with the Kentucky Jailer Association, so we'll have that conversation, too, to see. The more people we get involved, if we get the magistrates involved, we get the county judges involved, we get the League of Cities, we get the Kentucky Jailer Association, whoever we can get involved. We stand stronger together than we do separate, you know, so.
Ernie and Frank have a intricate spreadsheet that Ernie can plug numbers into. Just this morning, I think we took state inmate count of 60 and plugged it into the spreadsheet, and it tells you that the jail's gonna need a contribution of around a million and a half dollars at 60, which is about where we're at right now. So I would encourage each of you to, if you have, can take a little time to get with Ernie and let him show you that spreadsheet and let him plug those numbers in and show you the differences and the differences that potentially could be made out there if we can enter into some other avenues of revenue, so.
Well, we're hunting, we're hunting daily.
As, as Greg will tell you, and he's preached for a long time, it comes down to food, medical, revenue coming in, and salaries.
Those are the three highest costs at our jail. The salaries represent two-thirds, closer to 70%. I didn't land the point earlier. The staffing levels we have, we have to have a certain staffing level for this opportunity to come online. Now, unfortunately, because of the situation, we probably won't be able to hire them at least initially. And keep in mind, too, because of the unemployment, other employers are paying more just to get people in the door. So that's artificially driving up the, the cost, and it's gonna affect the entire county. It's gonna affect all of our, affect all of our businesses at some point. So, you know, I'm reading an article last week, food costs, our grocery costs are up 30% from, from a year ago. So the county and I, and when I think in terms of that number, the contribution, our stated goal is we'd like to keep the taxpayers' contribution to below a million dollars. And we've averaged, I think, 928 since you took office, and it's a cost. Unfortunately, it's a cost of doing business, but that's what we're working at, and Greg and I, I think, agree that revenue's the way to do that. So many of our costs, utilities are still gonna be the same. Your water, it may go down a little, but, but you're still gonna have a certain amount of cost. The only way to offset that is with that revenue. So we'll continue to work on that and keep the jail committee apprised. Hopefully, we'll meet with these folks next week. We're, we're, for, for labor workers, we're no different than basically any other agents. We're no different than the fire department. We're no different than Parks and Recs. We're no different than the sheriff's office. We're all providing service to our community is what we're doing. And yes, they all come with a cost. And we're trying, and these guys will tell you, they sit and look at these numbers probably more than I do, and they'll tell you we've taken every approach we can to generate revenue, cut costs, cut overhead. You know, Mr. Elkins and us, we've been talking this morning about the lighting issues. The good thing is, a lot of the things that, that we're looking at over there that we're talking about that needs to be done, that's gonna become crucial at some point, we do have a pretty good, right now, knocking on wood, we have a pretty good labor workforce. So we have free labor. So that's, that's one thing that they're, that we're able to help with. You know, we've spoken about things to try and help other areas in the county. You know, I've spoken with the road department. I know the road department does the lawns here at the courthouse and at Judiciary Center. We're still in lockdown till the state turns us loose. And I told Mr. Curtis and him, I said, listen, we get broke loose, I'll help take some of his burden off you back. Because that furnishes free labor, and he can have these people doing other things in the county that are more helpful.
Is that the same thing with the litter pickup?
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, we were, you know, we went back and looked at it a year ago, what, what's the financial contribution of free labor? It was roughly 535,000. These are real numbers. You know, we need to get back to that. It's good for the community. The trash pickup, as you've driven around the county, is terrible. We need to break our people out of jail to get that work done, the Parks Department. And Frank mentioned the road department. Every time we've asked them for help, just like the fire department, they've, they've been there to help us, so we really appreciate that as well. We'd like to return that favor.
We feel like a dog chained to a porch right now. We're raring to go. The weather's breaking. We need to get it done, but until we get releases from the state, you know, we're, we're kinda there. So, you know, don't want you to think, I'm trying to do something on a daily basis, because I think anybody over there in that building will tell you, we, we shake, rattle, rollin' about everything.
Thank you. There's also some big-ticket expenditures that need to be discussed, mainly, mainly the HVAC system at the jail. It's just a matter of time. It's a ticking time bomb before we have to spend that money.
And I appreciate you bringing that up. We're gonna, I, I'll get it to all of you, but, but we'll have everything pretty much cost-effective. And again, a lot of this that we're gonna look at, you're gonna look and say, well, there's several things on there, but there's a lot of things that we discussed this morning. You know, we'd do the free labor. When it comes to doing some of the things internally there, we, we can do that. So, so, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're on the same boat, headed in the same direction, so we're just, we're just trying to keep it flowing smoothly.
I would echo Daniel's point. Money's cheap to borrow right now, and the HVAC system's a big-ticket item, and now's the time to look at it instead of getting surprised with it, so.
It's 30 years old, and we're spending a significant amount of money every year. Regardless of what's in that building, that's gonna have to get replaced. And remarkably, I found out yesterday, part of the, this opportunity is they base what they pay you on how much debt you have, and if you have more debt. So it's kinda, that's, that's government for you. You know, if you've been responsible, we're not gonna pay you as much, so. So go ahead and get that done, and it's in. So, so go ahead and get that done, and it's a needed repair or improvement. At the same time, it might help pay for itself.
One other thing, when I say we're trying to cut corners, we had, and, and magistrates have been through the building with us. We had one area in the basement that, that it's just one large open cell area. We closed it down. We condensed people back upstairs. We run into problems and, and myself and Mr. Elkins had this conversation this morning. We run into issues where you can't mix state-county inmates. You have people that, that just absolutely do not get along, can't be in the same areas together, so we have what they call keep-aparts. So, that's, that's one thing. But we have been able to shut the basement area pretty much down, turn the lights out on it. And, you know, we're doing anything we can to try and, and help cut costs. I know sometimes we don't communicate this on a regular basis, but we're always trying to do whatever we can to, to make things better. I appreciate your time, and anybody has any questions, feel free to contact myself, Ernie, Lieutenant Newsom. And hats off to Alicia back here, she's been a great help. She's sat in on our meetings, and she's not got us in trouble yet, so I just want to thank her.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Nancy, were you wanting to talk about civil war or tourism or anything?
I'd be delighted to do that.
Okay.
You know, those are my two favorite subjects. Maybe not civil war as much as tourism, but it does drive tourism. So, in the past, you have allocated funds for maintenance of the Civil War fort. The majority of those funds do go towards mowing and weed eating, and we are very blessed to have a dedicated person who does that for us. Last year, we received sixty-five hundred. We are making the same request for this year. I will let you know that our picnic tables, which were made in twenty oh four by Brad Wills as an Eagle Scout project, are falling apart, literally. I will be reaching out to another scout project to see if we can't get some more tables built. Otherwise, things are in good shape. We just are very dependent upon that money. And I would echo my comments earlier in regards to funding the shared office agreement, and I say that because that directly impacts tourism. For instance, to reprint our brochure and distribute it, that is about ten thousand dollars a year. We were not able to distribute our brochure in rest areas and regional hotels last year because we couldn't afford it. I'm very hopeful we can do that and as well as some other advertising. I was just reviewing the state's matching funds co-op and for twenty-twenty-two, and to put things into perspective on that, an ad in Southern Living, quarter-page ads, over ten thousand dollars. Country Living, which we have advertised in before, and it represented about twenty-seven hundred leads that year. That one single ad is forty-seven hundred dollars. So, advertising is expensive, but it also has a return of investment about a hundred and thirty-four dollars for every dollar we spend in advertising does come back to the community. Again, with COVID, it is imperative that we advertise this community to help our businesses get back on their feet. So, I welcome any questions you might have.
I, I just have a note. It seems to me a recurring theme from the budget discussions today is mowing grass. If there's some way we could get everybody to work together, maybe we could find a way to, to lick this a little better, just as a suggestion.
I, I welcome that wholeheartedly, because it's a large expense.
So, just keep that as a thought. Heck, I don't know if, I don't know if inmates are allowed to mow grass on, outside of...
I mentioned it to Frank earlier, when the Parks Department was up, you know, when we get free, can we do this? Because we've done it in the past. The one thing we have to be careful of is families will find out where they're going to be dropped drugs. So, we have to be very cautious that, that we make sure when they come back in, they're not carrying anything they shouldn't have.
Gotcha.
But yes, we're...
Well, and on that, I mean, I, I welcome any and all ideas. We do not have any equipment. So, the gentleman that mows for us is bringing his equipment, and he does a great job. But I welcome anyway to save some time.
Questions for Nancy? Okay.
Thank you all.
Is there anyone else who is here that would like to take questions about budgets? Is there anyone that anybody on the fiscal court would like to call up? So, I, I won't be forcing any of these people to come back then, just keep that in mind. Oh, yeah. Michelle, Michelle wants to go ahead and mention something, kind of the groundwork.
Right, voting machines. So, Park Enterprises and myself and Judge Payne had a meeting back on April the ninth discussing voting machines. As you heard Ralph say, just in how that went to effect by seventy-four, everything's going to go to paper. So, may not be this year that we are going to have to purchase new voting machines. Now, with that said in mind, right now, we have twenty-six precincts. Last year, we did four super centers, which I thought went great, and I am, like Jeff, I am going to send out something by the newspaper, by Facebook, to see what the general consensus of the county is. Does everybody like the four voting centers? Where you could go anywhere you want it to? Does everybody want to keep the twenty-six precincts in mind? But by doing that, that's more money for fiscal court. To get, the new voting machines for all twenty-six precincts is three-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars. I applied for a grant, got sixteen thousand. So, with that, I purchased two machines that we are going to use for the mail-in ballots. So, if we condense our polling locations to the four or five, then maybe we can get the voting machines.
What can you do with what you have now?
Do what?
What can you do with what you have now?
We can use these machines for the next election, but it's going to be mandated, they all go to paper, so we're going to have to purchase...
How many paper machines you have?
We have one for every precinct.
So, you have twenty-six?
We have twenty, we have twenty-seven in town, the acetate area.
That's the scanner?
Yes.
That, that, what scans?
And these new machines are totally nothing like the old machines.
But they say, if I'm not, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but you said, we don't have to start replacing, or it's just on the purchase of new machines as they break down, it's not...
That's what's required, by the way.
That's what's required, but we don't have to go out and replace all the machines at once, correct?
Well...
It's just as they break down?
No, but, well, here's the problem, because when, in that, in that time, when they come back on election night to read them, you're going to be having different tapes. So, if we're going to do it, we need to do it all at one time.
We have different tapes now, don't we?
You've got one J C and one paper. These are going to be the same, same scanner.
Is that something that the legislature and the Secretary of State anticipated? Do you know?
I can't answer that question.
Okay. Because I can, neither, I've discussed this issue with both of them, and neither one of them said that. They told me it's attrition, you replace them as they go out one at a time.
Right. Now, we do go to just several, and like I said, I haven't sent that out yet to see what everyone thought. The board and I have talked about it once, and we're still undecided what we want to do. Kind of like get everybody's input on it, see what they thought. So, but that's just on the burner, just to let you know about that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, Michelle, I always thought it a bit, I don't know if ridiculous is the right word, but it, it just seemed like a bit much to have two precincts in the same building, another precinct a hundred yards away, and to try to staff all of that and provide equipment for all of that. It seemed like overkill to me.
I like the four super centers. I mean, if you were downtown, or if you lived in Trapp, and, and you're in town at Walmart, and you realize that you hadn't voted it, you'd have to drive all the way back to Trapp to vote to come back to town. Here, you could, and I did, in fact, in the general election, I did all four areas of the county.
Yeah, I would...
I think it went over great, but, you know...
I thought so too. It seemed like it from a distance anyway. I might, would encourage maybe at least one for every magisterial district or something like that, but like for my district to have four precincts never really made sense. I mean, or four locations for my district just didn't make sense, and probably four or five for most of them. Maybe condense it down to one in each precinct or something. But I, I liked the way it went before as well, so.
I'd be, with your survey or ad or whatever you do, I'd be real careful with the way you word it. Because if you were to word it, do you like the changes that occurred in the last election? You're going to get a completely different result. Any other questions for Michelle? All right. So, I think we've got all of the budget stuff out of the way that we can. Anyone, I'll have Addie come when we discuss the budget again. Anyone that we have missed that you all are concerned with, if you could, just drop me a note, so I'll know. We requested people attend this meeting, but, you know, we may miss a person or two that Drew would like to see. So, back to our agenda. Item number sixteen, discussion of hiring an assistant treasurer slash director of finance. Alicia, discussion.
I don't know what I need to discuss.
You need help, right?
Yes, I need help. And previously, in the past, this position has been available. There has been a third person, and then it got absorbed into two of the previous people that were here in the treasurer and the finance officer positions. And it is more work than me in the finance officer that we can do. So, I would like an assistant, like treasurer, that would be able to be my backup, and so that when I, when I do need to be off or that they can kind of, I think it can kind of segregate the duties that I do. And then the director of the finance would have to take on some of the occupational tax duties and make sure that we are collecting what we need to be collecting and that businesses are paying, and we can, we can more look into those undelinguent businesses, that the current company that we are contracting with, that we are not getting, we're not getting um reports or, we're not getting um communication for.
And we're not receiving any funds from them either, correct?
Correct.
So, basically, we have a situation where, I guess, because previously we weren't able to meet all of the obligations of collecting those taxes, we contracted out with a company that really doesn't, no longer seems interested in doing what they were contracted to. We probably need to have someone on staff to at least see what, what's left on the table, what we can collect. Hopefully, they would be able to, you know, pay for themselves just in that role alone. Am I correct that in previous audits, this is, this relates to the segregation of duties that the county has consistently been criticized for, for a pattern of years?
Yes.
Okay.
You need a motion, Judge, to adopt this job description?
Well, actually, I, I provided the job description, just so you all would know that one exists. I think the correct thing would be to take it into the administrative code. I don't know that there's a problem with approving it, but it, it needs to be put in the administrative code eventually.
Well, do you need a motion to, to, for the fiscal court to advertise for this, or do you need any motion at all?
I think we need to fund it.
The admin code will change in, or we modify it in June, which is next month anyway, so.
I'll make a motion that we fund this position.
Forty thousand dollars roughly, or just you want it to be negotiable?
I'll just say negotiable. I mean, I'll, whatever you find is good, advertise for it and...
Hey, so just to clarify, with this, I will be a fiscal court employee, and I will be the supervisor, and they will still, I, I, I think, answer to the fiscal court.
Okay, I'll second. Any discussion?
Y'all have a little discussion, please.
Go for it.
I've always thought that when we hire an additional person, that this person needs to spend part of their time, maybe a third of their time, out in the field verifying what we're getting submitted, where people say they don't owe the taxes or they're not paying enough, to actually go into these facilities to verify what we're getting. So, I think we need to amend this job description so that this person knows he's not going to be sitting behind the desk doing data entry. This person needs to be out in the field part of the time, visiting businesses, verifying their information to make sure that we're getting what's due us. If we're not going to do that, we're not, we're not doing anything at all. And secondly, well, we, not too long ago, we, we approved somebody from a DECO to do some data entry and stuff. Will that be absorbed into one of these positions, or are we still going to need that person that we've, that we authorized from a DECO?
A DECO's contract is, is expiring this week, so it was last week, okay. Alicia, would this person be picking up that data entry?
Yes. The, what the, a DECO employee, what they've got us caught up on was when businesses, when they're turning, like, zero returns, and that, what they were just telling us, and they, they did not do any business in the county. And we have piles and piles and piles of them, and we need to get caught up on those in that way that we don't go to businesses and assume that they are delinquent, because these businesses, a lot of they were turning in returns. And so, we do anticipate that this employee would, would be doing that data entry as well.
So, you and I had this discussion the other day. So, you really don't have a problem with this individual being in the office some of the time and out of the office some of the time, and if that's the case, we need to actually amend that job description to include those additional duties, I would think, because from my reading of it, it didn't, it wasn't included in that job description. So, we actually, before we approve this job description, we need to go back in and fine-tune that to include these other duties.
I'll say that I agree with you on that, Robert, and I will make a change, or Alicia, whichever one of us works on it. We'll make a change to the job description, and we'll put that in the administrative code.
Well, that's, maybe we can get it done quicker than we've been able to do on the administrative code change for the animal composting. I still haven't seen that one.
Alan, you've got a description for that, don't you?
What's that?
The animal compost position.
We've not seen it, we've not approved it.
Yeah, we'll approve it with the administrative code. We've said that probably ten times.
We got a motion on the floor then?
Yeah, motion in a second. Any...
I was just going to ask, I think you've got this in the budget, don't you, the new budget?
Yeah.
I thought so.
Mm-hmm. All right, all those in favor, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Sure. We, we are approving funding the position of director of finance slash assistant treasurer at a negotiable rate. And it's our, it's budgeted for next year's budget at forty thousand, but we didn't put that in the specific order or note. Okay. Item number seventeen, discussion of updating the county's website. If you'll see, there's, I believe both proposals are in here, two different proposals for the county website. One of them is, well, if any of you have viewed the county website, it's certainly, and I'm not going to say it's MS-DOS, but it's pretty, it's pretty dated. It needs to be upgraded, it needs to be worked on. One of these proposals, the more expensive of the two, is who the city of Winchester uses. It's really not so much only a web, website development, it is continual service and interaction and some other things that may be of interest to you. The trifecta proposal is simply to upgrade the website. Now, I will tell you, anyone who knows me knows generally I go for the cheaper of the two options almost always. And my initial response was go for the cheaper of the two options. However, there have been developments with the funds we're getting in from the federal government, which I do think we will be able to use towards this, especially if we use the second, the, the larger of the two options in regards to rural broadband. We also have been working with Charter Communications. I've had discussions with them over a, a matter of months. I've had discussions with them over a, a matter of months, as well as AT&amp;T, to try to work on our rural broadband issue. I believe that we're going to be able through private slash federal investment outside of the Recovery Act, um, provide three thousand new houses with broadband in rural Clark County. After that, there's still gonna be some houses that don't have broadband. We have to find some way to identify those people. We have spoken with the folks from Civic Engage. We believe that they can help us set up an interactive website where people can basically let us know whether or not they have internet. If, you know, if they're at the public library, they can say, this is my address, we don't have internet, it's interactive, we can use it to track those people. I'm also gonna suggest that we do some sort of mass mailing effort, because obviously if you're reaching out to people who don't have internet, some of them aren't gonna be able to get on the internet and tell you, and they may not get access to tell you as well. But we, I want to find out who the people are outside of the first three thousand that I think we've already covered in the last year and a half's work, but there's still gonna be one, two thousand more. We've gotta track them down. I've spoken with AT&amp;T and Charter and our state representatives and senators in regards to the state funding. I believe we can get the private entity to match perhaps up to half and the state entity to match the other half. And all we have to do is give them the addresses. That's the deal that I've been negotiating. You can't really get a better deal than that from the county's standpoint. We give you the names, they pay for it. But it is gonna be our responsibility to track these people down. So, uh, my suggestion would be that in order to achieve this kind of, uh, effort, we're probably gonna need to go with the more expensive of the two options, although that is against my general methodology.
That's the second proposal, the Civic Plus.
And Judge, after I, I looked at both these proposals, and I tell you, the, there's a vast difference between the, the two, two websites. And after, and after I looked through it, I mean, the type of transparency that this is gonna provide to the community is gonna be unbelievable. I mean, it's got agendas, you can, you can apply for jobs on there, I mean, it's gonna cut a lot of the paperwork out. You're gonna have, I mean, you put budgets and actually there's, uh, formats here where they can sign up for text alerts. So if there's a road closure or something like that, you can actually punch it in and the people who have signed up for it will get text alerts of what things going on. I mean, I think this, it really kinda excites me. I mean, it's really upgrading the technology and the website to the, uh, to the county, so those are my thoughts on it. Judge, is there something?
Go ahead, Travis, I'm sorry.
Is there something you wanna do today, or?
If you all are comfortable approving it today, I'll take a motion and we'll vote on it. If you're not comfortable, we'll put it on a later agenda. However you all feel about it, it's fine with me. Um, I do think that there was a inclination that we could spend a little extra money to expedite the process. I don't think that's necessary, simply because I've never had any indication from a state grant writing standpoint that a rush was anything they considered. So I think that, uh, you know, over a matter of twenty weeks, however long it takes to develop it, that probably would coincide roughly with when we need to gather the data so we can get broadband.
Is that the same type that they gave you?
Who, the, uh, yeah, the company, yeah, regularly twenty, twenty-six weeks, something like that, it takes them to set it all up. And the state is, uh, you know, it's kinda up in the air how long it'll be till they even get their own rules set, but I figure probably a good guess.
Go ahead, Greg.
I was just gonna say that it, this does appear to move Clark County further into the twenty-first century and, as Mr. Konstantopoulos said, provides a level of transparency that, uh, we've never had before. And, uh, I, I am excited about that as well, because it allows people to sit at home and see what their government's doing, has done, research ordinances, uh, it's just, it, it opens everything up that we do, pretty much to find it from home, and I like that a lot. So I encourage it, I'm excited about it, and I'm okay voting on it today if we go that way.
I'd make that motion if you'd like it.
I'll second it.
A motion has been made in second.
For the Civic Plus?
Yes. Civic Plus proposal. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, seeing none? All in favor, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item number eighteen, review of the updated codification of ordinances. Um, the reason this is on the agenda, I wanted to provide you all with advance notice before the, uh, second reading. I believe, was it May seventeenth, Janet, is that May eighteenth? They want us to give them any response we have to changes that need to be made to their supplement. Um, and I know that there's probably gonna be some Ts that folks want dotted and I, or Ts crossed and Is dotted, so if there's anything you have today, please let us know. And, and also, just as a note, we are always happy to, you know, take an email into consideration and forward it that way as well. We don't have to, you know, go through every grammar change in, in a public hearing if we don't have to. Um, feel free to email us and we'll take it into account that way as well. But if anybody has suggestions they'd like to make, that's what we're here for.
Uh, Judge, I would encourage you to have copies of the pertinent sections distributed to all department heads and agencies that are mentioned in the code. Have them review their section that applies to them and sign off on it before we give the second reading. Absent that, I'm not gonna vote for the second reading if, if everybody hasn't signed off on it, because I've gone through it time and time again, and I'm sure I've missed a few things, but, uh, those individuals who deal with the regulation daily, I'm sure is aware of them, and they can catch changes much more readily than I can, so, uh, if they haven't signed off on it, on their section, I'm not gonna vote for the second reading.
Any further discussion? I, I will note that, uh, just for the public's sake or information's sake, what, my belief, what they did was they took copies of the ordinances as recorded in the clerk's office and verbatim took them into account. Um, one good example, I think, would be actually what we're discussing later today. If there's, if there's ever a clerical error or an error in some paperwork that may not have reflected the true intention of the court, but it was recorded that way, that's the way they, they wrote it down. This is just codifying what is recorded in the clerk's office. So our review, I'm sure from American Legal's standpoint, should simply be to confirm that what they have is what the clerk has. And all we did was simply send them copies of what the clerk had. Um, if something, for some reason, you know, if a county attorney, if, uh, the clerk for some reason, or anyone else, you know, didn't sign a document, whatever, that's really not American Legal's interest.
And the original issue was in twenty, in the beginning of twenty twenty, it changed a lot of the admin codes that were questioned when we were about to do the second reading.
Right.
And so we just had them go ahead and update.
Yeah, this is an update of the prior document, so this is further up to date, and we'll do another update probably at the end of this year. And that's why we funded that line item in the budget, I think a thousand dollars. Okay, all right. So, like I said, if you see anything you want us to know about it, please email, let us know, and we will forward that information to American Legal so they can fix it for our next vote, okay?
Because if they don't hear from us, they're gonna sue, and they're gonna run it.
Right.
We need to tell them yay or nay or something, so let's.
Otherwise, they're gonna send us what, exactly what you're looking at, yeah. All right, item number nineteen, consider approval of the second reading of an ordinance to repeal the firearms provision of ordinance two oh one eight dash oh seven.
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
That motion carries. Item number twenty, consider approval of the first reading of an ordinance relating to a budget amendment for fiscal year twenty twenty-one for the Clark County Fiscal Court.
Motion approved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item number twenty-one, consider approval of the first reading of an ordinance relating to an onsite and centralized wastewater system and the creation of non-taxing sanitation district. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I have a lot of discussion.
Okay, go for it.
Where did this ordinance originate? What's the intended purpose? Has the health department been contacted or mentioned twelve times in here? Surely someone has discussed this with them. Um, the enforcement, it says you're supposed to do this, that, and the other, but there's no section for enforcement. Uh, uh, again, uh, I've got a couple more comments here. Uh, i- if you read this ordinance, what it appears to me is gonna happen is we're going to create this sanitation district and apparently do away with the health department, because everything in here is already covered by the health department regulations. So I'm not really sure, uh, apparently Mr. Gill knew more about it than I did, because this was the first I've heard of it, and I don't know who's been working behind the scenes on this, but I kinda get the feeling of the people with the sole ordinance, uh, somebody's been doing something we didn't know about. So, uh, can someone bring me up to speed and tell me what this is all about?
This was recommended to us by the Bluegrass Area Development District as a way to get grant funding in regards to taking packaged plants and putting them on sewer.
It, it doesn't say that anywhere in here.
Well, it doesn't have to say that. I think Karen's here, she's willing to talk about it.
You have to create the, 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 uh, district to do so, and I think we've talked about, uh, replacing those packaged plants several times. I don't think anybody's done anything behind the scenes, so.
Oh, I was hearing my other comment. The other comment was it mentions the, uh, Red River and the Kentucky River, it doesn't mention the Licking River, and probably half of our county flows to the Licking, to the Licking River. So I don't know, uh.
Well, Judge, if I can.
Sure.
So this came about, and many people listening to this and, you know, in this fiscal court, we've talked considerably about sanitary sewer, and originally the discussion started, gosh, probably a couple of years ago, about US sixty, and it came to my attention, and then I, of course, shared a lot of this information with Judge, and he spent a lot of time on the two, that some of the most immediate issues and really problems are on the Rockwell Road area. And as Mr. Gill spoke in his comments or public comments, probably the two most worrisome packaged plants are, uh, Treehaven and, uh, Yorktown, uh, Yorktown being in my district. So I've, I've been really aware of this for a couple of years, and especially in the last year. Jerry Edwards, who's, uh, president of the HOA at Yorktown, and they own and operate that package plant. I've been out there personally, Judge, I know you've been out there recently. It's in very, uh, I would almost say, critical condition, uh, not operating really as it should. I know Jerry and his board have been very concerned about it for a long time. Uh, you know, the HOA does not have the funds to replace that plant, which probably would be, if not six figures, maybe even seven figures. Uh, there's about a hundred and ninety, uh, properties out there, so probably between six to seven hundred people just living in Yorktown. You also have Hancock Creek, which is, flows through or flows right next to Yorktown. So the problem, the immediate concern became, well, what happens if that plant fails? And so in talking with Karen at Bluegrass Ad and yourself, Judge, and, uh, of course, as you all know, we approved Palmer Engineering, uh, Stephanie Blaine there, the engineer Palmer, has spoken with us quite a bit and is doing some work on that for us, but, uh, the overall plan would be to get adequate funding, namely through CDVG, but there's some other sources too, which, you know, we wouldn't have to presumably pay back, uh, to get sanitary sewer out on Rockwell Road in that part of the county. And the two immediate goals would be to be able to retire those two old package plants, both of them forty-five plus years old. There would also be potentially three older, uh, pump stations that could be retired, and I think two of those are owned and operated by WMU along the Rockwell Road area closer to Treehaven, and also I think Southern States has a, a pump station that could potentially be retired as well. So, I mean, first of all, the mention, and I, I've looked at some of these, some of the ordinances that other counties have passed, you always see references to whatever the, if it's the Red, Red River or Kentucky River or Licking River, and then, of course, it mentions many other creeks, streams, lakes, water resources. So the, the overall public health goal is to protect river streams, tributaries, and so forth. Um, of course, those are mentioned by name, but there's others that are referenced. So, um, the environmental concern out there and, and in addition to the public health with, you know, you have hundreds of families and hundreds of people who potentially wouldn't have anywhere for their sewage to flow to after having depended on these old plants now for decades. My understanding, and this has been confirmed, is that the division of water, State Division of Water, uh, is very, uh, committed to seeing those old plants decommissioned and retired, those old package plants. So a lot of counties, uh, particularly Madison County, Mercer County, I think Lincoln County, several others have adopted sewer districts or sanitation districts. Um, so the, I think this, uh, this ordinance, and I've gone through it now a number of times, it, it's, uh, I, I think very well drafted, County Attorney Elkins spent considerable amount of time on it. I, I looked at the, the early draft and, uh, you know, I, I think it follows very, very closely many of the other counties that I've looked at and their ordinances. Uh, you know, establishing the sanitation district, I think, is essential to getting the funding, running the program, establishing the infrastructure, the financing, and so forth. Um, you know, we, we may, you know, quibble over language or terms, and then there's certainly conversations that we can and should have, but Judge, I thought, since Karen has been kind enough to come to the meeting and sit through an entire morning of budget discussions and everything else under the sun, maybe if she were comfortable coming up and answering any questions or concerns that court members may have, and she may have her own comments she wanna add to what I've said, I probably didn't do it justice.
Done an A-plus job. Gold star.
I have a question.
Sure.
Has the Clark County Health Department reviewed this ordinance? They're mentioned twelve times in here.
That I do not know. I think that would, I would defer to Judge Pace. The, the ordinance is not, the creation of sanitation district is not intended to do away with the health department. Uh, the health department would still maintain, um, their responsibilities as far as septic tanks that are in the area and issuing, um, the permissions to install septic tanks.
Would you not agree that most all this language is also included in the health department responsibilities?
I have not viewed your health department responsibilities. I, I did not craft the ordinance, I'm not an attorney, so I've not preached any of that with any kind of authority.
KRS two twenty dot oh four oh requires a petition before we can establish a district. It requires sixty percent of, uh, the people living within the district to sign a petition requesting a sanitation district. Has that been done?
That I, I don't.
Thank you.
Master Davis, can you answer that question?
As to?
As to that KRS?
What was it when he cited? I apologize, I didn't get.
Two twenty dot oh four oh requires a petition.
Well, I, I think when talking with the county attorney, I, I'm familiar with KRS two twenty. Uh, there are essentially, in talking with Mr. Elkins, and he and I had a long conversation about this, he concluded, and I concur, that there are essentially two mechanisms by which you can have a, a special district created within a county. One is KRS chapter sixty-seven, under which we would be creating this district. The other is KRS two twenty. And KRS two twenty gives a different mechanism for creating a sanitation district. You can go that route. One of those, and in that, in that regime, you have essentially, uh, a finding by the clerk, by the health department of that county, it's sent to the Commissioner of Sanitation in Frankfurt, which is also the Secretary of the Environmental Energy Cabinet. And then he or she would then direct, kind of a top-down approach to directing creation of a district.
That, that particular mechanism would cause the sanitation to fall under the purview of the PSC, which would give you a lot more red tape and hoops that you would have to jump through, whereas if you're creating the district, which is in this case under the KRS sixty or whatever, whatever the number was, then that leaves, falls, then they fall under the, the purview of the fiscal court, and it gives you a little bit more flexibility.
And as in my understanding, Karen, most of the counties that have created these have created it under KRS chapter sixty-seven, so you more have county local control. have created it under KRS Chapter 67. So you more have county local control. So 220 is definitely a way in which you could create a district, but it is not the only way that you have to create a district.
It's optional, is the way that you would...
And I think that was, and again, I don't want to put words in the county attorney's mouth, but I believe that was his conclusion too, when he was drafting this. So, and I agree, for what it's worth, I agree with that. I think it's acceptable to create it under Chapter 67, and that's what we would be doing here.
There was a county, Scott County, I think, in southern Scott County, that had a package plant that failed not too long ago or was failing, and they were contaminating or polluting the stream that flows between Fayette and Scott County.
That's correct.
They created a sewer district or not?
No, they, what they have done, so the mobile home parks, it's actually three different mobile home parks that are all together. That, the ownership of those parks is in receivership, and so the receiver has negotiated a contract with Georgetown Municipal Sewer, Water and Sewer Service. There will be a single connection at the, you know, at one end of the mobile home park, where they will connect into, you know, Forest Main out to the Georgetown Sewer Plant. And so the, you know, the ownership of the collection system will remain with the receiver. So Georgetown's just accepting it for treatment. So it'll, they'll allow them to take the package plant offline and decommission it completely. But there's no sewer district. It's still...
There was a seven-figure, seven-figure fix as well.
It is a very large, very significant project.
Yeah.
Yes. But very necessary. It's been...
Yeah, because it actually did fail, and that's what package plants did.
There were two package plants. One of them did fail, and so now it's been, all three parks have been operating on a single package plant, you know, barely. And it's in pretty, pretty bad shape.
Yeah, not, not, not what you'd hope for.
Right.
Yeah, I just want to, like Magistrate Davis, and I want to thank him for the work that he's done on it, and Magistrate Constantopos as well. It, hopefully, will fix these problems before they get that bad. And that's what this is designed to do, because to be sure, those plants will fail. Mr. Gill said 40 years, and we're approaching that now at the end of their useful life. And we know what happens when they hit the end of their useful life. We start contaminating streams and...
When I spoke to Stephanie and Karen in regards to the project, and, you know, if ever there's a time for us to get funding for this project, now is the time with all the ARPA funds coming in, because there's a specific amount of that that is designated for infrastructure that will be handled through the KIA, if I'm correct on that. So we have a very good opportunity to address those issues now with very, maybe zero to little funding from local government, which is huge. And we've got to take, we've got to take advantage of that opportunity, because we may not have it again.
Yeah, it allows us to provide sanitary sewer for a significant portion of western Clark County, which has been without forever. I mean, it's, this is 2021. And we have a large portion of Clark County that doesn't have sanitary sewer.
And this would put the infrastructure in place for future development. It would have capacity. It's not benefiting any developer or anything of that nature, because this is strictly targeting the package plants and getting those off the, off the, onto sewer, excuse me. So ultimately, that's what we need to do, and have the infrastructure there. Then, you know, if developers want to come in at a later date and pay the fee to get on, then they have that opportunity. But right now, it's to concentrate on those package plants.
That's the reason we're probably choosing the Rockwell Road Route. Targets those two plants.
That's the designers. They are the master plans of that.
But the maps that I've seen, I think, go that direction.
So in order to apply for that funding, Karen?
Yes.
You have to have the sanitation district?
Yes, there was, we had had some preliminary discussions with the city, but, you know, them being under a consent decree, they're unwilling to take on any more debt than is necessary. And so having the sanitation district, that will become an eligible entity to be able to apply for these funds.
And in regards to that, you know, just to paint in a little bit broader strokes than all the detailed area talk, if we have a sanitation district, it allows us, if we extend the bypass, it allows us anywhere that is not serviced by WMU to provide sewer. And there's other places in the county that need sewer as well. And we can do projects like this in the future if we have a county district set up. Otherwise, we pretty much rely on WMU and the city to provide sewer, for lack of a better word, if they just want to extend it out into the county for some reason. Really, it should be our responsibility.
This is probably a silly question. I'm still going to answer or ask it. I know, I realize that the city doesn't have much sanitation problems, but are these usually a joint ordinance between city and counties, or is it usually just a county thing?
It's usually just a county.
Okay.
Who determines, makes these determinations if you have access to the wastewater systems? It says when they become accessible, but it doesn't tell you who's going to make that determination, kind of like the lack of enforcement. So I'm...
The, if I may, and Karen may have a different answer to this, my understanding is if a structure that's going to have, putting out wastewater is within, I think it's at 500 feet. And I think that would be the gauge. Now, if it's exorbitantly expensive, you know, the board has, the board of the district would have some discretion to say, we're going to give you dispensation for that, and let you go on septic. But otherwise, you know, if you're within that distance of that service, where you could establish service to the main, sewer main, then you would be obligated to get on the sanitary sewer. So the goal is, you know, people living in the rural parts of the county that are on septic, they're not going to suddenly be forced to get on sanitary sewer, because it's not going to be anywhere close to the majority of those people.
Sure.
But obviously, if you decided, I'm going to build a home, and you're 250 feet, or, you know, less than that even, in some cases, from main, you're going to be expected to get on. And the board's going to be able to, you know. And ultimately, that would go, I would imagine, to the permitting process for building and establishing, you know.
I think it's still elective on the part of the board, though. If I recall correctly, just from discussing with the mayor, I think WMU, I think Colby Hills is one of them, has some locations that if the city wanted to, they could force them, under the terms of their ordinance, to join the WMU sewer, but they have not enforced it.
If we're enacting this under KRS 67, why is KRS 220 referenced eight or 10 times in here?
So the 220, the references to 220 give the purpose of the sanitation district and outline kind of the goals and objectives that the sanitation district would be carrying out.
Would it be fair to say that this ordinance likely represents a draft made by legal experts and then adjusted specific to Clark County that the development district provided us?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, absent any health department input and absent any enforcement language, I'm going to vote no.
Well, I want to, can I address that, Judge?
Sure.
I mean, Magistrate Blaine's brought up several things that I don't think are very accurate or fair. And I'd like to have a moment to address that. First of all, the first page of the document, the district is directed to work collaboratively with Clark County Health Department. Secondly, in Section 12, called concordance, and I'll, if I can just have a moment, Judge, said, "Ordinance shall supersede all previous ordinance or orders of the Clark County Fiscal Court relating to the establishment and or operations and management of wastewater services and facilities, if any, excepting any which may relate directly or indirectly to the Clark County Health Department." So this is not superseding anything the Clark County Health Department would otherwise be doing. It does not overrule them. It does not put this over the health department. Further, this ordinance shall be interpreted and construed so as not to conflict with other Clark County ordinance, as well as federal state regulations. It goes on. The next section, we talk about enforcement, any person, entity, corporation violating any of the provisions of this ordinance, or failing or refusing to comply with the regulations of the Clark County Health Department or the district relating to this ordinance, shall be fined not less than $50, not more than $500 for each offense. So then, of course, that would fall presumably to the Clark County Attorney to handle any enforcement. And obviously, that could be brought by private complaint. It could be brought by the county detective, or for that matter, any law enforcement agency. Or for that matter, the health department could go and sign a criminal complaint. Each day such person or entity, corporation fails or refuses to comply with the provisions of this ordinance shall constitute a separate offense. So we're working collaboratively with the health department. It does not conflict with the health department. There is an enforcement, there's a clear enforcement mechanism. So Judge, I just think that's, I want to clarify that, because, again, I think, you know, sometimes waters get muddied when somebody just decides they're going to be against something just to be against it.
No, it's serious mud, all right. Who enforces it? Do we have an enforcement office? If you depend on the county attorney and his detective, you're going to be on the bottom of the list.
Okay.
And it says...
Now, that's, hold on now.
Listen, do we have enforcement now? And how long does it take to get anything done?
We do have enforcement through the county attorney's investigator. Now, the legal process, we can't control.
He's not been in town for five months.
We can't control the legal process. Anybody who's been in court knows it always takes a long time. Any other questions for Karen? Okay.
The, I just want to say this. The enforcement, anytime that I've had anything sent over, I've sent over the county attorney, and it's been handled in a very timely manner. Every issue that the court has brought up, it has gone to court, and we can't help that the court issues have been delayed because of COVID. So making those type of references is just completely unfair. So there is enforcement in there. Anybody can file a complaint, and then it can be enforced. I have nothing further to say.
Karen, I think we're done with you.
Thank you, Karen, for all your hard work. We appreciate it.
That's what I wanted to say, is thank you, Karen, for waiting around for that. Much appreciated. Very helpful.
I'd like to ask Jerry Edwards to come speak. Just the most important part of this discussion, especially as it pertains to what we're talking about out in Gregg and Magistrate Davis's district, it really isn't, you know, worrying about what might happen 10 or 20 years from now. It's not, you know, worrying about the details of the document. I would challenge any of you, because I've done it, to go out to Yorktown, to look at the giant tanks of human waste that are rusting with holes in them, that rain flows down a hill, overflows, and sends sewage directly into the Hancock Creek, and tell me we don't need to do something about it. We can talk about all the detailed stuff. We can talk about the things that concern folks about US 60, that's further on down the road, if it ever happens. But as it relates to this document, as it relates to right now, we have 600 people who could very well be out on the streets within six months. If you go look at the brittle rust, that is literally falling apart. I could have stuck my hand through it if I wanted to. So Jerry?
All right. Yeah, I'm actually the president of the association out of Yorktown. We're a nonprofit organization. A lot of our people are older people that's lived out there all their lives. They're not a lot of money generated out there. And like Chris, Judge was saying there, every time it rains, we get an overflow of the tanks, because all the drain water comes off the interstate and off of the, off of Rockwell Road itself. And it overflows the tanks, and all that raw sewage then hasn't had any kind of treatment, and runs off the Hancock Creek. Well, we have been cited for this numerous of times through the state. Well, the state comes out, and they've been very good with me. But they said, you're going to have to get somebody to get you onto the sewer line, one way or the other. He said, we understand you all, you don't have the money. You're talking about millions of dollars for 190 homes, because each tank just controls so many homes. Well, you're talking about 600 people living out there. And it's 55 years old. You know, you say 45, this is 55-year-old tank. They literally got holes in them this size. I showed Judge Pace yesterday. I had to shut one tank down because it rusted out so much. And those tanks have to be leaking into the groundwater as we speak. And the EPA guys, they understand that. And they said, Jerry, he said, you've got to keep mandates on this, so try to get it by, but it's going to fail completely here. It might be tomorrow, it might be next month, it might be a year from now, but it's shot. I mean, I'd be more than glad to share the letters that, you know, they give us so many days to try to make mandate repairs, is what they call it, you know. And, or they go find $10,000 a day, which these elderly people out there can't afford to have. A lot of elderly people out there. So, you know, I'd be more than glad to have every one of you come out there and take a look. And I've got pictures of every time it rains hard, the tanks overflowing into the creek, you know. But any questions for me? Like I said, I've been, I'm familiar with this one and the one at Rockwell also. I get called with questions about how to take care of their stuff, you know, best they can, because those two are on the edge of their failures.
How many gallons are those tanks? It's hard for me to accurately represent in my mind, but I know they're about the size of swimming pools.
Okay. They, those tanks are 24 foot deep. One of them's 40 feet long, the other one's 37 feet long. So you could times that and probably calculate your gallon. You're talking about thousands and thousands of gallons.
And the one that's 37 feet long is shorter, because it had to be partitioned off because the side of it rusted and fell off.
You can see the big holes. It was rusting all the way through. And the airlines on them is all deteriorated. We just keep trying to put patches on it to keep it up, but it's not really running like it needs to be running. It's a safety hazard and concern to everybody. Not just people that live there, the 600, everybody downstream, because it's affecting the water.
Heck, if I lived in the Hancock Valley, I'm...
It's coming to you, brother. Yeah. Every time you look after a door when it's raining, you can say, it's coming to you. There ain't nothing I can do about it.
And the thing is, it's coming in small quantities now. But there's a serious...
It's not treated now. See, it all ends up in Hancock Creek. It, you know, sooner or later, but it's treated first.
That's correct. There's a serious threat of it untreated, large quantities, winding up in Hancock.
Lot of sewage, yeah. Raw sewage.
That's a better way of putting it.
Yeah, raw sewage. It's just straight from flushes, your toilet running down the front of your house.
And like I said, this isn't maybe going to happen. It's certainly going to fail.
It's definitely happening as we speak.
It's going to fail. I would encourage everybody to support a mechanism to fix these issues, because it, I guess you could say it's dire. It really is dire now. It's a situation...
I'm 100% confident saying that it's leaking, as we said during speaking, as rusty as those tanks are. Because I've been in bottom of those tanks, guys. I do all this for free too. They can't afford to get people to do, hire anything done out there. I'm going to be honest with you. I pumped those tanks out and got down there and fixed those patches enough to get by. And those tanks down at the bottom are just as rusty as the top. So there, no doubt, it's leaking in the ground. So anything we can do, I mean, it's something, it's, if it goes completely down, 600 people have got nowhere to live. And what are they going to do? They're going to be, it's going to be a mess, you know. And go out there and look at the community. The community is well-kept. We don't allow no junk around, no trailers, no boats, nothing in the yards. Everybody keeps, it's a beautiful neighborhood.
It is well-kept, and I will say, I will say that I've had a couple of complaints about issues out there, and the county attorney's office very quickly got those taken care of. So it's, there was some enforcement that went on, and some, it didn't have to be enforced because it was addressed, but, yeah, it was taken care of very quickly. Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Again, I just think... Again, I'd just encourage anybody to, to go out there and look at it with your eyes, and walk away not thinking we need to try to help do something, and that's why the federal government provides these forgivable loans, that's why they provide these grant funds for these type of low-income projects, because the fact of the matter is, and, and I don't mean any disparagement at all, those folks can't afford to fix that themselves. So, it's, it's up to the people who represent them to try to get it done in some way, shape, or form, and the reason Karen was here, and the reason she advised us to set up this district specific to this project, although I think there are other benefits, is because it allows us to seek the kind of funding that's going to be required in order to make it possible to fix these failing package plants. And the ancillary positive thing is, it gives us the opportunity in the future, anywhere in the county where we need to set up sewer without requiring or needing WMU to do it for us, it gives us the, an avenue to do it. And, and let me say this, I, I know I've heard some people complain about the new bypass. You know, if I was setting up the new bypass, I'd have put sewer on it when I did it, but I wasn't here, I didn't do it, and I'm sorry, I apologize, but in the future, I would like to see us, if we're going to develop new roads, let's develop infrastructure along with it. So, anyway, I guess that's my two cents.
I've got a motion on the floor.
Do we need Michelle?
I'm keeping it for the chair of the meeting.
Oh, okay.
It was just one last motion.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
That motion carries. Magistrate comments? Magistrate Thompson?
I think we've had enough for today.
Well said.
I agree.
Magistrate Blant?
Just kind of an update, I talked to Buster about the courthouse painting, he's finishing up a job, and he told me he would be here by the middle of the month, he thought, waiting for the rain and the weather to heat up, so he should be resuming his schedule on the courthouse shortly. The guy who was doing the work has retired, so he'll have another superintendent over here doing that for him, so, but we should, we should be getting started on again here shortly. Just a reminder that I saw from the minutes when we approved the funds for Holly Rude, I think that's the only allocation of funds from the fiscal court fund that we approved that we didn't do an order on, I don't know if that's necessary or not, just, just simply an observation. Let's see, I think that's it, thank you.
Magistrate Davis?
Nothing, Judge, thank you.
Magistrate Elkins?
Very quickly, I'll mention a planning and zoning meeting, May 25th, at the Central Baptist Church, I think, concerning several ordinances, and just going to remind everybody that that's going to take place then, and maybe Judge have, I know I don't anticipate any issues, but you might have asked the sheriff to provide a couple of folks to attend the meeting with uniforms on.
I got a feeling the sheriff will know about it, but...
I'm just going to make sure it happens, all right?
Okay. I, I did want to bring up the fire trucks that we've been discussing whether to proceed with an ordinance or a lease on. If we're going to, and I know this is a little bit tiki-tack, but if we're going to have a second reading, we're going to have to advertise that that costs us a little bit of money. From my preliminary review of about twenty pages of the American Recovery Act documents, as long, as, as well as a couple of hour-and-a-half seminars online, I think it's likely that we cannot use those funds to pay down debt service. So, if that affects anyone's opinion as to whether or not we should just leave it as a cash purchase, or go ahead with a lease or ordinance, I'd just like to encourage a little bit of healthy discussion.
Bond it. If we can't pay it off, then bond it.
I don't disagree. Okay.
And wasn't that the cheapest rate, Judge?
Yeah, well, we could just leave it as a cash purchase and not do either, that's another option.
Kind of like bonding it, just my, my opinion's all, I'm one of seven.
With money so cheap, you hate to tie up your, you know, your liquid capital.
Right.
All right, anybody else have any commentary on that? All right, fair enough. That's really all that I can remember anymore, it's been such a long whirlwind of a meeting. So, do I have a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Oh, were you still back there? I thought you...
You took a nap.
You back there sleeping, weren't you?
Daniel, I'm going to say different than the sheriff, Paul was awake the whole time.